I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, September 11th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders and welcome back to Noel. We'd love to have you at the table.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you'd like to say some comments.
And I would like to express my appreciation of Robert. You threw him into the deep end. And I think he did really well. And I was watching some of the videos. He moved through the faces really well, but thank you for the welcome.
Okay, good.
Good to be here.
Yep. I'm Dr. Homan. We have some items in the table file. Would you update us?
Yes, we have several items in the table file this evening. We have an additional item under discussions and reports. This is an activity sponsor partner agreement in which Community Resource Bank has agreed to pay $20,000 toward the sponsoring of the new scoreboard at the district swimming pool, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the agenda. We also have a number of personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, and a couple of leaves of absences. We also have one item being added for individual action. This is a co-curricular addition related to increased participation in boys cross-country. So those are the table file items for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? I move by Jeff, second Miami. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, motion carries. Do we have anybody sign up for public comment? No. Okay, then we will move on to announcements and recognitions, item four.
Yes, we have three this evening and obviously today is September 11th, and I think it's appropriate for us to take a moment to recall the reprehensible acts of terrorism that took place on this date 22 years ago. 2,987 people lost their lives in those attacks in Manhattan, in Washington DC, and in rural Pennsylvania. And I ask that we observe a moment of silence for those victims that we lost in 2001 and to their families who still carry that burden today. So just please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I want to share with you that our district's adult basic education program has gotten started up for the year. And one of the first things that they have started this year is offering free adult English classes that began on September 5th. We've had more than 20 people who attended the first session, which I'm told by the education is excellent for the first night of class. The classes are held at the Northfield Community Education Center on Tuesdays and Thursdays. There's a session from 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM, and then one from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM. So we congratulate Community Ed on their work to offer this important service to people learning English in our community and to really get a number of people there to start. It's really a positive sign. So we're excited for our adult basic education program. And then finally, I'm happy to report to you that the Cannon Trophy is going to stay right here in River City. The Cannon Trophy, which is the symbol of the Rice County football rivalry between Northfield and Faribault High Schools will remain with the Raiders. Northfield beat Faribault 39 to zero on Friday night. It was a gorgeous evening, a large and very well behaved crowd and really just a great experience for the first home football game of the season. So congratulations to Coach Yule and the Raiders. Those are the announcements for this evening.
Very good. Thank you so much. Board members, do you have any announcements or recognitions at this time? Okay, we're on to item five, which is our items for discussion and reports. First up is our elementary schools' continuous improvement plans presented by principals Nancy Antoine, Scott Sanus, and Sam Richardson. So present regarding the plan for our progress report on the goals set for 2223 school year and the new goal set for this academic year. Welcome.
Hi there. What do I need to do here?
There you go. He's got it set up now.
He's got it. Okay. Perfect. Well, I'm Scott Sanus. I'm the principal at Spring Creek Elementary, and we're happy to be here tonight. We started doing this plan together. I think it was during COVID. We decided to do a joint school improvement plan. So that's what we're doing. When, so the first thing I want to talk about here is our daily work. When we do our daily work, we make decisions and plan. We always keep the district's strategic plan at the forefront of our as we strive to prepare every student for lifelong success. Our district is full of talented teachers and support staff who pour their hearts and souls into developing plans that really build our students curiosity, which plays a huge role in developing those critical thinking skills. The strategic commitment serve as a great reminder about why we're here and the work we do. We want to engage all our people. Our students, staff, and families are important to us, and we strive to make sure they know we care. And we want our students to be academically, socially, and emotionally supported. We work with people from a variety of different places, and we work hard to make sure the student has a fair opportunity to reach their full potential. Dr. Homan is a great role model when it comes to communication, and we follow his lead. We use a form of cascading communication with our staff members and our families to make sure our messaging gets to our target audience. All of our principals send weekly messages to families, and as elementary principals, we send our messages on Fridays. Stewardship is important to us as we manage our people, budgets, buildings, and time. We love the partners we work with in this community, whether it be HCI, Northfield High School, Northfield Middle School, our Early Childhood Center, and our many volunteers that range from parents to St. Olaf and Carlton students to retired teachers, just to name a few. We value our community partnerships, and we're better off because of them. Next slide. All of our districts benchmarks are tied to our vision and our strategic commitments. The purpose of our plan, we used to do the school improvement plans for each individual site, and the three of us. Oh, one more. Okay. And we decided to do this together, and it works out really well. And we made sure our school improvement plan aligns with our district's strategic plan. And the goals are written to inspire action. Dr. Homan plans to meet with us quarterly to check in our progress on each of our SIP goals. The clear set of shared goals allows us to align our efforts at all three elementary schools as we prepare every student for lifelong success. During this part of the presentation, we're going to share brief success stories related to SIP goals. Behind here a little bit. As we all know, it takes a village to raise and educate our students. On our first day of workshop, I was grabbing lunch and received a text from Hope Langston. And she said, "The Spring Creek third grade reading proficiency exceeded 95% of schools in Minnesota," which was an awesome message to receive. And then I had the good pleasure of getting to go visit kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers, second grade teachers, and third grade teachers, our AdSIS support people, and our reading court people to congratulate them on, you know, job well done. One other quick story has to do with partnerships. Last year, Shane reached out to us with an idea. His idea was to have high school seniors take a trip back to their elementary school for a senior parade. Our students line the hallways and cheered for the seniors as they paraded through the hallways. It was great to see the seniors again, and they were an inspiration to our students.
All right. So as Scott mentioned, there are a few different ways that we can celebrate successes from this past year. One of the ways was through the MCA results, which were very encouraging. And as Scott mentioned, it starts with the foundation and our early childhood moves to kindergarten. And then those teachers help connect the dots as students move from first grade to the tested grades in the state assessment program, which is started with third grade. We had at Greenville Park, a huge celebration, the students in third through fifth who were tested showed increases of 10% from year to year in reading and 11% in math. And that was a huge success and just a testament to all the work that staff have done from the pandemic to kind of that reset that we had last year. And so just kudos to all the work teams that work in the summer, all the way through, you know, to those teachers in the classroom, working with students, to the volunteers and interventionists that helped. Another piece that was a highlight from the year, we did something different than we had done before with our goal setting in the previous year. And instead of looking at the MCAs or one larger test, we set goals that were really specific from kindergarten through fifth grade and looked at foundational skills, reading fluency, letter sound fluency, math fluency. And what happened was this allowed us to check more frequently on progress, and it allowed teams to get more frequent feedback on how students were doing. And this then worked with our PLC teams. It worked with our support teams, special services, multilingual learners. That whole team approach was really enhanced by that. We also tried something new for social emotional learning. We had used a different measure called Sabers, where the teachers made some decisions about a rating for students, and this information was used to help provide more coaching, teaching, and support for students with social emotional learning needs. We used the SSIS this year, which was a combination. Teachers had a rating component, but students also had an opportunity in grades three through five to provide some of their own information. So this was new learning for us and allowed our support teams at each building to really connect with families and make sure students had the resources they needed.
And some of the other successes that we'd like to highlight are the success of our work teams. We've had summer work teams that have come in, and they've actually helped with each of the goals for our site improvement plan. And that's been really advantageous because we are focusing on the things that they want us to be focusing on and also the things that they're willing to do to help us move the needle, because we need to move the needle for all of our students, not just for a couple here and there, not for just this group or that group, but for all of our students. Our work teams have, they've worked tirelessly over the summer, making sure that everything is heading in the right direction. We really appreciate the work that they've provided. Another piece that I would like to highlight is our science scores. As a board, you approved the hiring of our science specialists not that long ago. And I tell you, the results are in the data. So our fifth grade science results do show the improvement of our science results for our students, and I greatly appreciate that. If you see what the work that our science teachers are doing, they are making sure that our kids have not only interest in science, but they're enjoying it. You hear the kids when they go to science, "Oh, I love going to science." I mean, who hears that? That's a wonderful thing to hear. So hearing the kids as they go outside, they're ready to explore. They've got their journals with them, so they're ready to take copious notes and find different things in nature, I think, is amazing. And I know our science program at Bridgewater, along with the science program at Spring Creek and Greenville Park are doing the same things. And so I really want to thank them for the work that they're doing, because they do make a huge difference with our students. Also for our kindergarten readiness, we know that when our students come in ready for kindergarten, they're ready to learn. And again, by the end of kindergarten, the data doesn't lie to us. The data shows that when they come in ready, we're ready to fly. And at Bridgewater this year, we have 105 kindergartners. So we have a full house. And then at the same time, it's so neat when they come in ready to go, and you know, they're telling you about things that they're reading. Like, who are you again? And it's just cute as can be, but they are reading. They know they want to learn. They're ready to learn. And today they were pointing out how good they've been working on their manners. Like, well, thank you very much. You know, so we emphasize those things. So that kindergarten readiness makes a huge difference, because when they're ready to learn, 100% of them can meet their goals by the end of kindergarten, and we love that. Also, a big highlight I want to point out is our partnership with our parents. We've got some of the best parents here, and it shows all the way around. One of the things I always remind parents of is, this is your building. These buildings are your buildings. They belong to our taxpayers and our parents. And so, and my message in that is that if you have a suggestion, you have a comment, please share it, because this is your school. It's your school and your child's experience and your experience. So please let us know, because those partnerships matter. And that one is, that one's a huge partnership that I never want to discount, because our parents are partnering. They're walking right alongside with us, and I want to make sure that we highlight them as well. So those are some of the things that I wanted to highlight as our successes this year. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Sanus.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, now we're going to take a look at our SIP goals and our results. So students in grades K5 met or exceeded 80% on the 10 of 15 measures that we're going to see on the next slide. The other measures were within several percentage points of the goal. Sam referenced the SSIS, and that was delivered to 100% of our eligible students over the course of the year. And staff created action plans for individual students based on the SSIS results. Here are the measures that we looked at. Again, 80% is, it was our goal. And you can see in the areas that we didn't hit 80% as I referenced previously, we were very, very close. All three schools will be community sites again with programming introduced at Spring Creek and Bridgewater last year. The participation goals are listed for three schools. 75% of the students attend at least one community school event, and 25% of the students meet the MDE target of 50-plus hours in the school year. Results last year, the attendance at all three sites did not meet the goals for the community school. For the goal of 75% of the students attended at least one event, Bridgewater had 64%. Greenville Park had 61, and Spring Creek had 35%. For the goal of 25% of the students meet the MDE target of 50-plus hours in the school year, Bridgewater was at 18%, Greenville Park was at 12%, and Spring Creek was at 9%. One thing I want to reference about community school is that it was new, and it was new to Bridgewater and Spring Creek. And one of the great things about it is about this year is that we already have 45 slots full for this coming school year. So that's good information that was shared by Megan Zwolinski. Did I skip one? Okay.
Another goal that we had last year was to continue our strong work providing equity in our education for our students. And we had an anti-racism goal. We had wanted to provide staff with a self-reflection tool and help equip teachers when they're working with students in the classroom. Culturally appropriate resources continue to be a focus and emphasis for our media specialists and our staff. And we've been fortunate to have many resources come to us through our community, through our parents, our PTOs. Teachers also are very good at accessing these resources, and there have been lists developed by staff who are knowledgeable in these areas to make sure that the students see themselves reflected in the books and the authors that we're reading in the classroom. We continue to focus on staff and students addressing 100% of racist behaviors or comments that may happen in the school and standing up and supporting each other. And we've continued to do that with a great deal of success. Belong, respect, work are three very simple expectations at all three elementary schools. And this equity work is so important for the belonging, the respect, and allows everyone to do their best work when they feel safe and respected. We did provide self-reflection tools. These are high effective, high-leverage instructional practices, and it helps to have a reflection tool for staff to see where they can grow and then also to feel positive about the areas that are already in place for them in their classrooms. There was a bookmark as well with reflection questions to help frame the important work that staff do each day. We had a training session in February as well with MDE, with their equity leader coming down to help us. And our school media centers continue to be leaders for us in making sure that culturally appropriate resources are available and students see themselves. One other area that we looked at last year was our employee engagement goal. And with our employee engagement survey results, we always want to celebrate areas that are strength, but we also want to look where we can improve. And this question on the survey, "My principal or supervisor consults me on the decisions that affect my job," really speaks to how we are able to involve staff in having input in their work. We were hoping to see an increase from year to year of two tenths of a percent. The score increased at the three schools as an average of one tenth. So we didn't quite make our goal. We were pleased that it didn't decrease on our score there. But we're looking at how we can improve in this area. We have rounding, which is a practice of meeting with staff during the year in a real intentional way to get their feedback about how we can improve or what we could do to help them improve in their role. We also have site teams at each school, and that shared decision-making model has been really effective for us. These summer work teams that we talk about really are the ones that we have referenced so far are focused on math and reading instruction. But we've also had for social emotional learning, we've also had work teams that have focused on, how do we do our workshop week? Or, you know, how can we develop our family conference model so that it's effective? So many opportunities for our staff. We have great leaders within our classroom teachers, great leaders within our support staff, and we want to make sure that they feel not only welcome, but that they see the results of their input in the decisions that are made. Looking ahead to this school year, one of the things we learned from last year is that the reading and math goals being a little bit more focused on those fluency measures, having real clear quarterly timestamps when we can take a look at how we are doing for each grade level, and teachers can look at their classrooms. This goal will be used again where 80% of students will reach the star CBM grade level benchmark for fluency quarterly. Now, one thing that we learned was that since it was the first time that we had looked at the data in this way, we had to recalibrate, and the teacher work teams in the summer really looked carefully at, are these the right measures? Are they rigorous enough? Are they too difficult? What is appropriate so that that success that we had in the first year with 10 out of 15 measures being met? This year, I think with some refinement, we're going to learn more as we really work hard to make sure that we're stretching our students, but that we're also realistic. And so how we set the norms and at what timeframe we have each of the different tested skills included is really important. And these span, as you look at math, for example, obviously, the kindergarten students are really working on some of those foundational math skills, counting, number identification. You have those students in fifth grade that are doing multiplication and division. So it changes that way. Family engagement, this is another important part. As Nancy mentioned, our parents are so important to us and our families. The percentage of families indicating strongly agree for the statement, "I receive positive notes, phone calls, and emails about my child" will increase by one tenth from 2023 to 2024. We stayed stagnant on this measure, and this is one that although we're pleased with the marks that we receive in this area, we want to increase and improve. We've done a number of different things from positive notes where there's postcards sent home. Our teachers have leveraged different technology tools like talking points to be able to send text messages in different languages or to have quick access for families on the go. And emails were sent and messages this year. We also included a special effort with our specialist teachers taking different grade levels and really focusing on providing important feedback to families for those grade levels that they were assigned in hopes of increasing this area. Scott Sanus led a summer work team looking at how we do our family conferences and how we do our family engagement. And so that will be another piece for this year in how we look at connecting families with the information that they need so that they can answer and say that they are receiving positive notes, phone calls, and emails, and that they have the information they need to be supportive of their child's education. And then in the area of equity, increasing staff knowledge about the populations we serve in Northfield Public Schools, we want to make sure we're equipping our staff to be able to meet students and families and to serve them and meet the needs that they have. In the reading and math area for action steps, many of the things that we are doing are will be similar. We don't have a major adoption for our language arts or math curriculum. However, guidelines for pacing and how we introduce the current curriculum was defined and shared out with teachers from our summer work teams. We continue to work with talented interventionists at each building. Title I and AdSIS teachers provide more support for students not meeting the grade level targets. All three schools have reading court tutors, and they have been really, really positive additions to our schools. They are able to, in many cases, find students who just need a little boost and/or potentially some development in a skill area that will unlock their full potential in reading. This year, we're looking at a few additional resources that are going to help in the area of foundational skills, phonics, guided phonics for kindergarten. The Bridge to Read implementation is a very specific program that our grades one, two, and three teachers will be introducing. And then 90 for 5% core phonics for grades four and five will be another resource that's new but is being implemented with enthusiasm by the teachers that research what would be best to make sure that all of our students have all of those foundational skills as they move on to the middle school after fifth grade. And then Rocket Math Online, as you can imagine, there's a number of ways to practice math fact fluency, and some of those can be highly engaging and entertaining, and some of those can be a little bit more routine and can become not as exciting. And so Rocket Math Online, Rocket Math was a program that in the past was paper pencil, and they have a new online version, and it it looks like it will be a game changer for keeping kids of all levels highly differentiated for those students who need more enrichment in math, and for those students who are needing more support in math will be able to engage in these programs. So we're excited about this and a chance to run the reading and math action steps with those goals in mind of 80% for those different measures. So, thank you.
I saw our action steps for our family engagement. Obviously, like I said, our families are really important to us. Our family, making sure that our families feel like they belong in our school is ultimately what we want. We want to embrace our whole diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, because that belonging piece is huge. And if we don't look at that, none of these goals will matter. So our parents will receive four report cards this year, one each quarter, as opposed to two last year and two conference reports. As what was said, our weekly newsletters go out every Friday at the elementary level, ensuring that when we use the small platform, parents can select the language that they want to receive that newsletter in. So that if you speak German, for example, you can go in and click German, and that newsletter will be presented to you in German. If you speak Spanish, you click on that link there, and your newsletter will be provided to you in Spanish. I think it's worked really well, because if we look at the statistics, for example, I sent out a newsletter last Friday, and I had about 400, and I believe it was 470 views of my newsletter. So it is getting to families. I send mine out via email and a text message, so they get it both directions. And I think that helps. And I have also learned that sending it out during the workday is advantageous, because many people read it when they're at work. And right, wrong, or otherwise, that's how it happens. And again, the data doesn't lie. So I will continue to try to get mine done earlier on Fridays rather than waiting till 6:00 PM to get mine done. So, you know, we always learn. Those informal conversations are really important, and those can be done in so many different ways. For example, every single morning, I'm out on the sidewalk greeting students as they're dropped off by their parents. I have time for those just little snippets of conversations that can be, you know, can you turn in money for my child's school supplies? Here's the money to, would you get that to their account? Oh, yes, I can do that. And just little things like that, or, you know, he's had a really rough morning this morning. Can you make sure he's okay? Yes, I can do that. Those informal conversations are so important. Even this past weekend, when you go downtown and you're seeing your students and families downtown, those are the informal conversations that we're talking about. Just taking the time to talk to, talk to, talk to our families and let them know how important they are. And today, obviously, we had heard a lot of comments about the things that they saw this weekend, which was fantastic. But just taking the time when we have those opportunities to talk to our families, and that comes also with living within the communities that we serve. So, for example, I live So, for example, I live within the Bridgewater boundaries. And so that's, those are, those are my neighbors. So this, they're not strangers. They're, they're, they're neighbors and they're friends. So I think that's important. Again, we'll hold parent teacher conferences this fall, just like we've done in the, in the past or this year, as we've done in the past. And also students who qualify for special education, they will, their families will have an I E P meeting that they have to, that has to be done on an annual basis. And so we will be meeting with those families. And then as needed, there's check-ins. Many times parents come in and they'd like to talk to you about such and such and such and such. We have, it's, it's our responsibility to have those conversations. And it's actually the stuff that provides a lot of fun within the day as well. Again, all of us, all of our staff are providing positive communication to ensure that all of our students receives positive feedback during the year. We want to make sure that that happens. And that can be as simple as one of us picking up the phone and calling home and saying, you know, I've got little Johnny in my office today. And of course, the parent gulps and it's like, oh, well, I just need to know how, how well he's reading today. He read to me today and I can't believe his fluency has improved so much. And you know, parents need to hear things like that. Parents need to hear how, how well their child is doing. They can be struggling at so many things, but if you can share the one thing that they're not struggling with or the thing that they're improving at, I think that's huge. So taking the time to do that. So we're encouraging all of our staff to do the same thing. Share that positive information with, with parents because they need to hear that. They work hard. And it's, there's nothing more heartwarming than to hear how well your child is doing. And again, we're looking at partnering with our school, with our community school program for family events. We're providing breakfast at some point, dinner at some point. But again, we want to engage our parents early, early on in the school year so they can stay engaged the entire school year. With equity, we're, Sam talked about the fact that we want to, we want to, we want to teach our teachers or in our educators about the families that we, that we have within our community. So looking at providing some virtual field trips so that, so that again, our, our staff understand this is where, this is where our students are coming from. And these are some of the things that are, that are, that might be part of a part of their makeup. So again, that whole understanding as, as opposed to guessing as to what, what our students are doing in our community. I talked to with my staff at the, at our very first staff meeting about some of the, some of the things and some of the trauma that our, our children are facing. And to, to look around the room and, and having staff go, oh, I had no idea. I had no idea of the, of the trauma that our, our, our children are facing. When we have children who are living in foster care, when we have children who, who have recently come across them, across the Mexican border, things of that nature. Our, our, our staff need to know and they need to know this might be why their homework isn't finished. So what, what do we do with that piece of information? Do we sit there and hound on, well, homework is very important. We've got to have our homework. No, we need to take a, take a, take a deeper thought about that and figure out, okay, what, what do we need to do to make to ensure that this child is successful? Because once again, they're our children. They're not someone else's children. They're our children. Our family navigators have been phenomenal. Some of the things that they do is they're helping with that communication piece. Some of the conversations that they can have with our families are conversations that we as educators can't have and shouldn't have. But it's really wonderful to when I, when I get Cindy, Cindy Santa to, to communicate with the family for me and helping to have that conversation about, can you have a conversation with this parent? Because we need to talk about bathroom concerns because the, you know, the child doesn't know how to wipe themselves right now. And so in having that conversation that can, that can really take, take that, take that, that situation and make it, turn it to a positive because I want that child to be successful. And I don't want the other, other kids to be making fun of that child because they don't know how to do this, but just giving them the skills that they need to do. And also, we would like to have our family navigators actually present to our, to our staff this year to talk about some of their own experiences. And so that, again, so staff can understand where they've come from. I've done a lot of work within my, within grad teaching about talking about some of our, especially our indigenous population. And some of the videos that, that we've watched for, for that class. And, and I would love to have some of our, some of our staff will watch some of those videos so they understand what it's, what it was like to be in a boarding school. And some of the photographs that come from, from the boarding schools and how horrific it was. So just really wanting to get our staff so they understand, again, the populations that we serve. We want to, again, provide those follow-up questions and reflection activities so that gives us a gauge on, are we, are we getting to, are we meeting the needs or are, do we need to do something different? So that's what we want to do in terms of equity. And then looking, looking at progress monitoring, our plan for the year is to have, again, those quarterly C B M tracking for math and reading. That's the curriculum-based measures and that will be done with all of our students. Again, we track conference attendance. We look at the different events that we plan, making sure that we track attendance at that and then have a log for our family contacts as well. And then obviously, the sessions that we, we provide for our staff, we will keep track of that as well as the staff attendance at those events. And as Sam wanted me to, to bring it on home, they hit that homerun or something, something of that sort. We look to say, thank you so much for your support and your guidance. And thank you for allowing us to present tonight. And then ask you if you have any questions for the three of us.
Very good. Thank you so much. Very thorough. Appreciate all the information that you put before us. And also just want to say again, great job. I hear so many compliments on each of the schools, the kids and the parents. Absolutely impressed and well done connecting with them. Okay, board members, do you have any questions or comments? Hey, Noel.
The children have come from a home environment now to a learning environment. How do you inspire them to, to, to the learning process?
I'll take this one. A lot of it is that, is that partnership? And then allowing, letting parents know what to expect, so laying out expectations and then helping to support along the way because that's, that's a big one that we can do. And it costs nothing to support our kids. You know, when you lay out the expectations, here's, here's we want, where we want them to be by the end of the year. So they know what to expect. And even in the spring, when we meet with our kindergarten, incoming kindergarten families, we're, we're talking to them about what we expect from, from the children by the time they're done with, at the end of kindergarten. But then again, we're, we're laying out all those support pieces that we need to have in place to make sure that the other coming from that home environment, but we want them to be learners. And I see it every year by the, by, I would say by the end of October, they're, they're, sometimes at the beginning of October, they're, they're ready to fly. And it's really fun. It's fun to see.
Thank you three for the good report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Thank you. And I appreciate the fact that all of the, the elementary schools share the goals over the course of a year. I think that's obviously, a lot of thought goes into figuring out what those are and how they measure outcomes. I did have a question just relative to the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three goal and the specific one. Can you remind the board, you know, what a community school is and then specifically around that M D E fifty-hour goal? What was that meant to, to capture or measure?
Sure. So the best way I can describe when I have a parent visitors at the school is a community school is a series of partnerships with our Northfield community. And then it's also a place on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings for Greenvale Park. As we added two new sites, it had a little bit different shape. And so sometimes this is programming after school and sometimes this is programming in the evenings. But these take different shape at each school depending on resources, the leaders at those schools. So it can look at times, you know, enrichment clubs, so chess club, STEM club. It can also be additional support in academic areas. We've had classes on healthy living and eating and you know, other times it's been, you know, STEM related and really feeding students passions, piano lessons, adult Zumba and cooking classes for adults in the past. It's changed shape a little bit post pandemic. And so with three sites now, this year, we have a coordinator, Megan Zwolinski, who will be working with all three sites to help rebuild programming that maybe had fallen off during the time when we weren't all coming together in schools. And then also, you know, continuing the things that are working really well at each site. So I think, you know, for students to attend one event, I think we've gone away from some all-school events. We used to have an evening of the arts at Greenvale Park, for example, and I know there's been similar events at Spring Creek and Bridgewater, bringing those back, a STEM night, science night. Those types of events really allow everyone to come to an evening event. Then I think for those students who are coming more often, that fifty-plus club or seventy-five-plus club, they've always tracked those. And I think that is something when you are offering one night as they were, as they were piloting this new expansion to Spring Creek and Bridgewater, not quite as many evening nights allowed. And, and so finding the right fit for each school community where students really lean into attending regularly is one of our goals. But I know that anecdotally, there are students who love school, but they really love community school. And it helps families feel more connected to the school community and Northfield schools. And then also there are some students who really thrive in those after-school classes socially and academically.
Sam, if I can just add to Dr. Miller's question, the fifty-hour mark. So our community school piece is rooted in a twenty-first century learning grant. And the fifty-hour mark has been connected, if you will, with improved school attendance and some other metrics during the school day. So part of the M D E flow-through grant process is to track those hours. And again, they see that fifty-hour participation in community school activities is having a, a bigger return on the investment, which is why it's one of the goals on an annual basis.
Just a quick follow-up question then. So when we maybe don't meet a goal like, you know, that one and like just for an example, is there a thought or discussion around carrying that over into the next year to, you know, see what changes you might make in order to, to achieve that goal or what kind of goes into that thought process?
And we look at, we look at still trying to meet that goal. The, I think one of the hard parts is like at, at Bridgewater, our enrollment was really high. So when you look at, when you look at that big N, when you divide that out by the hours, you, you may not meet it, but at the same time, we, we've got students who are attending. So I think when I, when I look at that, I, I think I want to look a little deeper into what are those numbers saying to us. And so like I said, we, we had a full house every single, every single night. So I'm not, I'm not worried about us. I'm not worried so much about not meeting that goal as I am about the, the number of kids that are, that are coming. And it, I really feel like we're getting, we're getting the, the right students who are there, the ones who really need to be there. So that's what, that's what I look at. But because I think, I think the goals are really necessary. But at the same time, I, I look at, you know, what, what else is within that goal. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Corey.
Thank you to you three for being here tonight. I appreciate that. I appreciate sharing the collective elementary, you know, report. I also appreciate the three, the goals that you shared tonight. I think that's important district-wide, but I also know that each school has its own community, has its own identity and culture. I'd like to hear specifically from each of you, one goal you have for your building this year and the people in it. And I say people because maybe it's the staff, the educators, the students or the families involved. So if you have one goal that wasn't on tonight's report for your building, I'd love to hear it. Thank you.
I would say that for Bridgewater, one of, one of my goals is to make sure that we're empowering people, empowering teachers, empowering our students and empowering our parents. And that one's, that one's not, not within, not within the, the, the presentation tonight, but I want to make sure that all of our students feel that they, like they're empowered and have the opportunities to, to, to take full advantage of the education system that we, that we offer to them. And I think those, those are, those are huge. I also want to make sure that, again, when I talk about, when I talk about our children, I want to make sure that that exudes throughout our building is that it's not, oh, well, the, these are E L students and these are special needs to, no, there are students. And again, you can't really write that down. You can't really measure it, but that's, that's my, that's my goal for the year.
I think one thing for Spring Creek would be that everybody feels welcome. And what we're doing as a district, I think Hope Langston got us on this. The University of Utah is doing a study about positive greetings at the door. And we have a number of our teachers who are, were part of a training and will continue to be part of a training as, as the year progresses. And then Sam, Nancy and I were trained as evaluators for this. And we will be evaluating at least once a quarter the greetings that are occurring when students come into school every day and what is said and how it's said. So making sure everybody feels welcome, including parents and including guests and including, including everybody who, who enters through that door. So that's a big one for us.
And I am, I'm very excited about that. It sounds like something that makes sense to teachers. A lot of our teachers, if you interviewed them, they, they would say they, they do that already. And that's, that's a great thing. Another piece for us, I think, is we do have, like I mentioned, outstanding support services, our multi-language learner instructors, our intervention teachers. And so connecting those teachers in collaborative ways and intentional ways is a, a big goal for us. And so at each school, we have these amazing teachers. And if we can work together, if we can streamline our efforts, you know, I know that we can help support students better. So there's a grant through the the state and it's M T S S, multi-tiered systems of support. And so these systems really are taking the talented people and the great programs we have and trying to align them to produce outcomes for all of our students. And so at our building, I can just see right now the faces of different people who work in different areas and helping them come together, removing some barriers. That's, that's one of my goals for this year for Greenville Park.
Nice. Okay, Amy.
First, thank you all for the excellent presentation. It's a good feeling to know that we have such strong leadership at our elementary school. So thank you for that. I have two questions for you. My first question is, in the last couple of years, we've heard so much about letters training and we got all of your reading scores, but they're not disaggregated between the schools. And I'm just wondering if, first of all, what percentage of your teachers have taken letters training and whether it's different between the schools? And if it is different between the schools, do you find that the school that has more teachers that have had letters training is doing better with their reading scores? Anyone want to take that one on?
I know last year when we, when we started letters training, we had at least forty-five teachers who were taking part in that. And you know, that is, that's a large percentage of our general ed teachers. We also have special ed teachers that are taking letters training. But I can tell you that when you ask a teacher about letters training and, and what they think of it, and they will tell you it's a game changer when it comes to literacy and instruction. I mean, they just, they just totally believe in it. And the really neat thing is they're selling their colleagues on it who haven't started it yet. And I, I would say, you know, before too long, we will have nearly all of our teachers trained. So that's a good thing.
I don't know exactly how many of our teachers have taken that, taken the training, but I do know there, there's a stark difference between the teachers who have been trained in letters in their, and their, their reading results and those who haven't. And I, I personally have taken the letters training for administrators. And again, amazing training. There, I tried taking the one for teachers, but you need to have students in order to continue on with that. And, and there, you know, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a, I don't have just one class. I have twenty-six. So I didn't, I didn't carry on, but, but I did carry on with the administrator, the, the letters training for administrators, which I thought was really, it's intense, in-depth and a high quality.
And I can just quickly, I just pulled up the roster. Very similar between schools. So are the range of teachers at all three elementary's buildings range between twenty-one and twenty-six? And clearly, we have different sized staff at each building. So I think that that shows that it's fairly evenly distributed through the three buildings. And I do think we've heard really great feedback from people who have taken it because it is such an excellent sequential, intentional way for teaching those foundational reading skills. So I agree, it's just, it's the flywheel, as we like to call it, is turning there and it's just a matter of time before everyone is trained. And it is not cheap, right? So we have gotten some grant money, but we, we continue to put both the resources and the time. And I think the other thing with letters to remind people is it's a hundred and forty hours. And you don't do it during your school day, right? This is outside of your, so it is a graduate course equivalent and then some. So I, I just, I had the data. So sorry to interrupt, but we like to give you the data when we have it.
Did you want to add anything, Scott?
No, I, um, no, I, I have very similarly, I, what I've noticed, we could, we could look at the, the results and see that I don't have that on me tonight, but it has the teachers taking the letters training. It has infiltrated into conversations when teachers are planning as a team, when they are um when teachers are planning as a team, when they are um looking at what other resources they want to bring to the district. Some of those action steps that I listed, those um types of ideas came through letters training. And so um, not only are they going through a hundred and forty hours of training, but they also are um, you know, adding to the literacy leadership at each building and then um across the three schools, so.
Okay, thank you. I, and I have a second question. So um, this goes back to the district benchmarks and I think your goals are great and I'm not asking you to add anything more to them, but if you could just comment on a benchmark that sort of falls to you, even though I think it applies to all the schools, and that's Benchmark Five, which says all students have a connection with a caring adult beyond their parents as they transition to middle school. And I don't know if you think about that benchmark as you go through your days, but how does that benchmark apply to what you're doing and what you're trying to do in, in the schools?
Well, one, one thing that we've done um at Spring Creek is we have had silent mentors. So we identify students who may not have um a great opportunity at home uh and or out and about. And we have teachers who are non-classroom teachers, not their classroom teacher, but they will be silent mentors for those, those students. And they'll meet them in the hallway. And when I say silent mentor, um, the student doesn't know that they're being, that they're, that they have this mentor, but the mentor will just make a point to see them on a daily basis, do a check-in, that kind of thing. Um, as far as connections at the elementary, you know, every, every elementary student has their classroom teacher that they make the connection with. That gets to be a little bit different when they move on to the middle school and the high school. And I know, I know the high school is doing some good things um moving forward that you'll probably hear about tonight um around that, but um that's just something that naturally occurs at the elementary, but the silent mentoring program is just one additional scoop of an adult in their lives.
When I think about your question, I immediately picture um our day and our daily routine and that student hopping out of their car, saying goodbye to their family, um, getting a high five from one of our specialist teachers or one of our educational assistants as they welcome them into the building. It might be Diane Torbenson, um, our reading interventionist who's at the kindergarten door welcoming them in uh to get some breakfast, or it might be they're heading into uh the main doors. Um, there, this um positive greetings at the door, you know, that's where our teachers are. They're out of in front of the classroom door, not at their desk working. They're out meeting these students and they're able to greet them there. Um, the classrooms are all um uh dedicated to having morning meetings where they are building classroom community and finding out more about the students, giving them chances to share, learn about their peers. Um, and then as they go through their day, those specialist teachers, um, those interventionists, I'm just amazed at how the staff at all three schools know, they know the students. We also have something called buddy classrooms and um I don't know if this is the same at each school, but um fifth grade buddies will be partnered with a first grade class, for example, and they'll meet monthly. They'll do either X small activities or the older students will help the younger students with an a- academic activity. Um, they become partners, those teachers then, you know, um also get a chance to know more students. And then finally, I think grade levels do things in a way that students can connect with other teachers in their pod or area. Um, Dr. Hillman's mentioned fifth grade at Greenville Park. They have a routine they do on Fridays. He tries to come to each school on different days and Friday is his day, so he gets involved in the, the celebration there. But um, all of those types of things um help us, uh really help students uh connect with, with caring adults, so.
And I would say it, it boils down to relationships and taking the time to build those relationships. And at the elementary school, we do a great job of that. And I'm not, and I'm not, and I'm saying we do a good job of that because I, I know it transitions to the other levels. Um, and they can, you can see it on our, on a regular basis, you know, um, there, there'll be times when when you may come over to Bridgewater and I might be sitting in the middle of the office with the, with the child in my lap or reading to them. Why? Because that's what that child needs that day. Um, I, I also know that um I, I work really uh closely with my, with my special education um department, especially my E B D department with the students with, with behavior concerns. And there, there will be days when you will see me on, in the middle of the floor, like I said, with, with the child waiting, waiting because I know that I have, I have some little soft um snowballs in my office and I, and I know if I roll that snowball to a child who, who is really dysregulated for that time, when that snowball is rolled back to me, I know that child is ready to talk. And it's, it's just, it's, it's just incredible to see that. But I, I think that we know how much that one relationship with one caring adult um does for a child. And that can be the difference between success and, and not success. And then you see, you see how that transitions. Um, for example, if you, if you walk over to the middle school at, especially during lunchtime to see the kids come flying because they, they wanna know, do, do you remember who, do you remember my name? Do you remember who I am? And I mean, then you know that, you know the difference you've made. Um, I went to the football game last Friday night. Um, of course, it was a slow game, but at the same time, what was really, what really struck me was the, was the vast number of middle school and high school age kids that I got a hug from during, and, and during the game. That meant so much. But that tells me, you know, it's not about me, it's about the fact that we as an, we as an elementary staff, we make that connection with the kids. And they, they're, they're still excited to see us, even, you know, even, even with us being principals, they're still excited to see us, which is so cool. So when, you know, it does make a difference because we, we can, we can still call that child by name. And they, they wanna be with us. They wanna, they wanna know, do you know me? Do you know my name? Do you know something about me? And that's what, that's what we're all about. And that's why it's so important that we take the time to build those relationships with those children. Um, it, it is, it's the, it's one of the best things. I went down to Family Fair last Thursday and just ran in there quickly and one of my students was there and um a, a student that, that struggles a little bit. And um, oh my goodness, you could, you could see he was, he was looking at me like, I know you, but where do you belong? And what, where's your box? And he says, are you a teacher? And like I said, he's a kindergartner. And I said, no, I said, do you remember when I, when I talked to you on the screen in the morning? I say, good morning, Bridgewater Elementary. This is Mrs. Antoine. He's, his face just lit up like, oh my goodness. You know, I know, I know where, I know where your box is. And he grabbed me by the hand and he was just so, so excited. And I, I said, do you remember what I tell you at the end? No, I said, remember, I said, um, I want you all to have a great day. Remember to work hard and play safe. And again, big smile on his face. And today he saw me again, and he grabbed my, grabbed my hand. I saw you. And it, and it's, those are the, those are the things that make a difference. So when you ask, when you ask about that one caring adult, all each of us needs to do is, is say, it, it's me that needs to make that, that makes, make that connection with the kid. If we all think it's our job to make the connection with each and every kid, can you imagine how many connections they actually would have? It's pretty amazing.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else question or comment? Jenny?
Thank you, um, all three of you for the presentation. Um, I think that parents um play a huge role in their, their child's academic performance. And I, so I'm, I appreciate the fact that you're you're really including family engagement as much as possible in this plan. I, I can't stress that enough, that, that importance. And it, it sounds like you all are very familiar with that. Um, and I appreciate that. And I'm also glad that you are now um sharing your report cards all four quarters. I think that's a great idea. Um, but are you, are you also notifying parents of their child's test results for M C A and STAR? So for every, for, for all the STAR assessments?
Correct. And that, that information would be, would be shared at conferences so that we can help, help explain the results, not just, not just give a parent, well, here's your results. But no, your child's results. No, we take the time to explain those results to, to parents.
Okay. And if they, and if they're not available to attend conferences?
We make every attempt possible to, to um communicate with that, with that parent. Be at, be at a phone conversation, be it via Zoom, be it, be um in person, or you know, if, if if we have to go to where the parent is at, we'll go.
Okay. And then on that um topic also, in the beginning of the year, our, our parents sent out a list or maybe some kind of introduction of the contact information for their child's teacher?
Yes, they are. Um, most of our teachers actually write a personal note that goes out with the placement. Um, we have gone from a um mailed teacher placement to an email. And um teachers now just send their own email about themselves. But I, you know, we could share a few examples. They're really cool. They talk about um the teacher, their family, maybe their pets and what got him into teaching. Everyone is a little bit different, but it's a really cool way to in- introduce themselves.
Okay, that's great because I know that, you know, of course, every staff member and including educators, contact information is on the website, but I think it's really, really critical to have those introduce um that information to parents, you know, to each parent individually, so that they may feel more comfortable um to, you know, take the initiative to, to make contact.
Well, and um in our family conference format, um at the beginning of the year, one of our efforts was to make sure that families were connected in um two digital ways. So CSOW um is one tool that's used for our kindergarten through third grade and um has sometimes extended to fourth and fifth. And then Talking Points, the app that does allow for the text exchange. Um, teachers wanted to make sure. So in the office, we fielded a few different questions as parents were coming, making sure they had the right app and they had the right connection. So um, making sure that um people are connected was one of the goals of that um family conference night, too.
Thank you.
Nice. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks for your report. I just kinda have one general comment question. Um, with three elementary schools, obviously the goal is to get off to middle school. Uh, and I'm just wondering, how do you collaborate or what are some benchmarks or goals you really try to work together on to get that, get the students into uh middle school?
Well, one of the things we do is we have um, we have some students who visit the middle school. Um, we don't have a lot of joint um events, but we do have now, we have a, a track meet for our fourth and fifth graders. And uh, that's something where they all come together. And it usually happens the last week of school. But that's about the only thing where we, we come together for, for all of our schools. Um, we used to do the carnival and that was a, that was a big event way back when. Um, that was probably twenty-plus years ago now. Um, but I think the track and field is probably the only thing that we do jointly. Is that right? Oh yeah, band and orchestra, they come together. Um, so as you know, we have fourth and fifth grade orchestra and fifth grade band. And they come together for that. We also have an all-district music concert. Uh, and then there is a daytime concert where they all get together and practice and, and that's another joint event.
And we also have um Mr. Jellino that comes on and speaks with our, speak with our uh fifth grade parents before they make that transition to the middle school. So he, so he's um available to answer questions for parents. We wanna make sure that we answer all of their questions so that they're not, they're not having a question or they don't know who to, who to ask that question of. So we've asked him to come every year to help us with that.
Um, and then I think um kudos to our um Director of Curriculum Instruction, Hope Langston, works hard with uh that vertical alignment between K five and uh six through twelve. Um, also, I would say that um the counselors at the middle school coming to uh meet with staff at each school to prepare, um and then also to meet with the students and help them understand uh they bring students back from the middle school and um students can see that um their former peers at, at the elementary level have survived and are thriving and that next year.
Hey Cory.
I'll make this quick because I, I know the high school administrators are eager to get up podium here. Uh, just to follow up on Amy's question about the benchmark, about making strong connections with other adults other than the parents and uh I think I've mentioned here a time or two that I'm a Greenville parent and my daughter just went to sixth grade and obviously last week was the first week of school and she's already been back to Greenville twice to talk to former teachers and she may even said hi to Sam, I don't know, but but she went and talked to her fifth grade and fourth grade teacher and she didn't get to talk to her third grade teacher because she's at the middle school now, second grade teacher retired. So certainly, teachers are obviously hugely impactful, as are all staff. And I know we have a, a great legacy here of hiring good staff, so. Um, and I see it in my home. And twice in one week, a sixth grader went back to report how well middle school's been going. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board members? Okay, well done, principals. Have a great year. And we will see you later.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is our high school continuous improvement plan presented by Principal Shane Byer, Assistant Principals Becca Bang and Rick Warren. They will also present on last year's uh goals and a progress report for last year's goals as well as the new goals for this academic year, twenty-three, twenty-four. Welcome to the three of you.
I think Tim's gonna take care of us here, I think. Well, good evening, uh Chairperson Gonzalez George and Dr. Hillman and the board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again. It feels like I was just here in year one. I do know a little bit more in year two, so I'm kinda excited to share with you. I, again, I'm Shane Byer, the principal. I have a couple of colleagues with me here. I'm gonna have them introduce themselves and then we'll get into our presentation.
Hi, good to see you all again. Thank you for inviting us to share with you some of our successes and some goals for this year. My name is Becca Bang and I'm one of the assistant principals also in year two. Happy to be back.
Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I, I talked to people about the summertime and how it's a nice change of pace. But when school's back and we're on week two already, it's so great to see the kids. So thank you for this opportunity to share about last year. Spring boarding into this year with a lot of continuous improvement lenses that we are wearing right now. Thank you.
Well, I, I'm uh have the great honor of kicking this off. And I think it's really fitting that the slide presentation has, the first five are really around this strategic plan and the, the, the directions and the benchmarks. And so I, I kinda quote Dr. Hillman here. I don't wanna say this verbatim, but he says something to the effect of, if you're tired of me talking about the, the strategic plan, then we're about halfway there. Right? So it's really, I think it's a funny, but yet it's uh uh accurate in that, you know, using the language uh and living the, living this plan is really the, the important piece. And I think as I look at, as I look at our, our opportunities to show up every day, living this plan, right? It shows up in the, the behaviors and our actions. Like I think the elementary really illustrated the importance of like a plan has to come to life. Like it on paper is, is one thing, but what does it mean every day in your school? I think it's important. So when I think about the, the commitments, for example, I look at the people. And that's where the change occurs, like, right? We have a school improvement plan, but that's just, again, uh words on a page. The people inside of that plan is where the difference happens. And so for, for us, we're gonna talk about tonight. Just some of the things our people are being uh exposed to in terms of new learning. So that the adults' behaviors can change, so that student learning can increase. That's, that's how that happens. And the learning outcomes are clearly um our, our, our business, right? It's why we're here. And we wanna, thinking about equity, we want every student to be achieving at the highest level. And so we have to put, you know, we have, we are a part of that district-wide M T S S system. You know, that's who we are. That's how we do school. And so having levels of under- uh understanding about the systems and levels of support for kids, it all begins with that classroom where students are showing up every day and getting that fifty minutes of instruction. High, high-quality instructions where it begins. And then having systems to support that really is really all about equity. And then communication. I, our high school is really uh eager to uh lean into the work to, for, to increase engagement of families. Um, high school's a different animal. Uh, parents view their role differently than they do in elementary and that's okay. We need to embrace that. But we, and then as a high school staff and community, we need to show up in ways that help families engage in, in the way they need to, given the developmental age of students. And so we have some ideas of how we're gonna share tonight about how we're gonna do that. And I think the other commitments there are certainly important. Uh, we've been through two-year budget reductions, right? And so how do we, we're really pretty tuned in to how to make the most of what we have. Um, and then partnerships are, I think, really support stewardship, right? Making sure that we are leaning on folks that can help us um do the best we can with what we have. So with that said, I think we're gonna move on to uh the benchmarks quickly, just to speak to those. First of all, thank you, elementary and middle school for, and our, our preschool for getting us here. Like the, most of those benchmarks are through eighth grade. And I look at the benchmarks that affect us. It's really about that connectedness that I think that we'll talk about tonight. It's about that emotional well-being. I mean, we, we look at our work at the high school through the lens of we're about wellness every day, in all, in all things. Uh, and I think the graduation, like that's the end through, you know, throwing the mortarboard in the hair, in the air is what our students wanna do. There's a certificate they leave with. And so we wanna make sure we're getting students on the right path so they're ready for what's next. And that looks a lot of different ways for a lot of different students. We, we serve about three hundred students in a class. And so many of them go to a four-year college. Many go to the military, into the workforce, two-year, whatever it is. For me, it's about what's next and preparing them for that. And then I think I already spoke to, to Benchmark Nine, which is really about parents and helping them to feel connected to their school and satisfied with the product that we're, we're delivering. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to um Ms. Bang. Well, actually, maybe not. I wanna talk, this, this is really gonna be what we unpack tonight in the next twelve minutes. Uh, is that we have a clear uh picture of where we're headed. Uh, we, that people know their place in that plan and that we really inspire action. I, I've been talking with staff a lot about this idea of inspire and trust and inspire. How do you create that culture? And, and not only for our adults, but for our students. And so, and that really gets back to that core instruction and community, you know, involving great relationships and helping students to feel like this is, they have agency in this thing they call high school. So I think I'm getting closer to my final, my final slide before I kick it off here with others is that really, this is really representative of who we want to be. There's a lot of words on this page, but I couldn't eliminate any of them because it really does capture who we want to be. Right? It's, it, every human, human encounter matters. Between staff and between the adults and the human beings that we encounter. And ultimately, right, you create that more democratic, more effective leadership model. We have all kinds of teams that meet. We are meeting throughout the summer because we, we, you know, staff is a part of making decisions about how we show up for kids. And it's important that we harness their perspective. And I think we're, our interest is in involving parents more in some of that too, which we'll talk a bit more about tonight. But that shared responsibility for action, I think, is ultimately the end. That we, we've been in class meetings this week and last week and a little bit next week, getting in front of every student with, with some good content that helps them to recognize who they are as people and that, that we want to develop them as leaders and what, what does it mean to be a leader? It's really important because coming at kids with the do's and the don'ts runs it out of gas pretty early in the process because they're now ninth graders. Like they've been through lots of schooling already. So hearing the do's and don'ts, while that's important, it's not, it's not the main focus. The main focus is building capacity in people to be great. And we're going to talk about more on that tonight. So thank you.
Speaking of the class meetings, I have shared this slide, I think thirty-five times now maybe in classrooms. So I feel really well prepared. And it really does speak to how much this is truly a part of our hearts and a part of what we believe in. So supporting our students and getting not just across the finish line, but to that launching point into their future doesn't just mean passing classes and getting good grades, but it's about supporting their development in wellness. And this is what we mean by wellness. So we're talking to our students about the importance of finding balance and getting support if they're dealing with mental health challenges. About the importance of making sure they're taking care of their bodies. And then about their inner wellness as well. So we're talking to our students about how it's okay and it's really wonderful if you can develop a confidence in yourself and where you're going, even if that's different than your friends. About figuring out who you are and coming to a sense of confidence with your identity and developing a readiness for whatever is next. And then focusing in on developing skills around interpersonal wellness to have healthy, safe relationships with yourself and others. So we're talking a lot about, it's like, it's, it can be okay. And like, I hope you disagree with other people sometimes. And I hope we're helping you to develop the skills to not ruin your most important relationships in your life because you don't know how to manage conflict or you don't know how to bring up something that's a problem for you. So helping our students develop these skills and just being straightforward with where they can go to get support, who our support systems are, if they're struggling with anything. Even if it means things that they're not supposed to do. So yes, chemical use is a thing that some teenagers deal with. And welcoming them into our offices to say, how can we help you? What is it that you need is something that we're really striving to do at the high school. We try to help our students and our staff think about these kind of four domains when we consider our instruction. So in the classroom, our why, right, is to have a commitment to these conditions to maximize learning. There's a lot of research behind the mastery autonomy and purpose that that is what a twenty-first century learner needs, right? Like I can't just tell you, this is what's good for you, but you need to have some say in it. You need to know where you are on that continuum and feel like it makes a difference for you. So we're having conversations with our teachers about like, you can't just tell them that they need a good grade in this to pass this class, but help them understand how this fits into their lives. And then the added piece for us is belonging. We really feel like our students are most successful when they feel like they're a part of the school community. So these are areas of focus for us as well. And Shane already mentioned that we're trying to develop leadership skills. I feel like so we brought in community partners in our industrial technology program, actually over the school year last year several times. And it was really fascinating to me to hear that, like the skills they wanted to emphasize and focus on most, they weren't, it wasn't like looking at AutoCAD stuff or like knowing how to change oil. It was the soft skills. And it speaks to what we really believe is true in that like leadership and the skills that we can support them to develop. Every single student of ours has within them and it's about teaching them, what does that look like? How do I show up to be a leader? It's been really exciting to lean into those conversations this week, especially this year. I get to focus on some of our seniors and seeing them in the hallways. Setting a culture of excellence and, and making sure it's known like how we roll and what it's like at Northfield High School so that we can continue to, to develop and foster that excellence within our school.
I just want to start off by saying it's really a privilege to come and speak to all of you tonight. Like Shane and Becca did say, we were in the classrooms last week and this week, and I think that is so, so vitally important for our kids to get a great start. I have kind of a hybrid situation here. I was here with COVID. And then I see Mr. Byer come to Northfield High School and see the systems that might have not been in place that we implemented after a long year of COVID and then, and having that. And then just looking forward to the continuous improvement of things. Again, in the classroom, it's just great. SEL is a huge thing. Wellness is a huge thing that we want to stress with kids because we are really transforming our school culture. I mean, really. And they, my two colleagues here haven't seen that. I am seeing that transform just by what we are doing in the systems that are in place. So credit, I just had to say that. Creditation is, is a huge, is a huge thing. It's, it's a mission of all high schools in our country. The eighth graders come here as ninth graders and they're not in the credit game. So it's, it's really important. As you can see, eighty-eight percent of our students last year were on track to graduate. That is outstanding. And with what we have already in place, we've been talking about, let's get to ninety, let's get to a hundred percent. And I think that's great that we shoot for that. Over to the right there, eighty-seven percent of free and reduced, non-free and reduced. And then growing up to ninety-three, that's a huge celebration. That's a huge win that we need to look at and even go even higher. Free and reduced, again, we see some improvement, seventy-three to seventy-five. So that is something that we really hold close to us and, and, and look to improve as we go forward with, with what we're implementing here. Again, wellness, these three things, communication and student learning. Wellness is at, at, at the heart of things. How we measure that and what we do here at Northfield High School is all based on those three things. It's, it's dictated by office discipline referrals, our SEL student surveys. Communication is huge, something that everyone is on board with. Talking points is a big thing that we have implemented, family engagement and I, parents as partners is something that Mr. Byer implemented last year, and I think you had three parents and what's that up to now? I think we're thirty-five and I think I keep asking them, Shane, is there a cap on that? And we're like, no way. That is so valuable. And then over to the left, student learning credits. Again, we're at the credits and I think our tier one MTSS core instruction is just going to take this and we're going to run with it and we're going to, we're going to get above the percentages this coming year. So we want all of our students to say, I am competent. Absolutely. Action steps. PLCs are awesome. I, I cannot wait. It's kind of a revamped renewed sense of commitment and looking at what the PLC teams can really, really be. And I really want to highlight hits, strategies, the high impact teaching strategy. We've done a lot of work in the summertime with our, with our teacher group. We've done a lot of work in our opening week. I think teachers are really understanding that, you know what, PLCs are going to be meaningful. We have differentiated areas that teachers will go to based on teacher surveys that they are what certain hit they are mastery, achieving mastery at, what certain hit do they need extra support on? And then on these Wednesdays, it's kind of a little bit different. We're going to, we're going to implement a hub of hit, I like to say hit masters. And they'll go in on Wednesdays and they'll be able to converse with hit masters that can help them be more achieve that. Utilizing flex and MTSS on student learning, flex is great. The ninth graders, I don't know about you guys, but the ninth graders certainly love flex. But I think the first thing that we really do say to them is that flex was made for your academics. Flex, flex is a great benefit socially. Social curriculum is huge. But if you, if you need that extra support, flex is when you need to do that and meet with the teachers. There is always a core teacher and on flex, I'm ready to go. MTSS, again, that core one into core two are structured study halls. Those are going to help focus on student learning. Equity is huge. I, I, I love the elementary and what we, what we desire to build every day. Restorative practices was something that I don't think that we really talked about at Northfield in my, in my four years until Mr. Byer came and I think it was introduced in a way that was unintrusive and it has something as a growth mindset. And I think teachers are really, really working hard to understand that, that, that's the relationship building piece. I just had a situation with a teacher and a student this last week. That we went through the restorative practice process with them and there was tears shedding and, and I told both the teacher and the student, I said, now I, I believe as we look forward to the school year, I think you guys are going to be stronger than you were ever before. And they gave each other a hug and that's the power of sitting down and having a genuine conversation with restorative. We're talking about non-exclusionary practices. Restorative justice is where it's at. Rebecca did say about Raiders lead, again with wellness, we are really, really having students think about leaders of themselves. If you're leaders of yourselves, you can, you can go out and you can grow your circle of influence and influence other people to add to the culture of the high school. So be on the lookout for Raiders lead because it is something that is catching on. And we have about a hundred, three hundred, one hundred and fifty kids already trained in Raiders lead and looking for more. Focus on communication is, is huge. My classroom snapshot, I talked to some parents already about some of that in, in the middle school. And they were recipients of that and it was very, very, it was a wonderful opportunity for parents to be able to look at the their students' classroom snapshot, but also it provided prompts for, for parents to interact and talk with their students about what's going on. It's not just, hi, how was school today, Becca? Oh, it was good. It actually gives prompts that is really a nexus to what's learning, what, what the teachers and the students are, are learning in the classroom. I love the school-wide communication tracker that we've implemented, to track at least four positive messages throughout the year. Again, Mr. Byer's parents and partners meeting, which is going to grow higher and higher each year. And then I, I'm really enjoying the work and I know Mr. Byer can speak more to this if, if you have more inquiries about it. But we're really working on our Schoology and Skyward guidelines as tools to increase communication. We look at Skyward as kind of staring at the grade book for parents and we look at Schoology as a look into the classroom. What's going on? We really want to keep those two entities right there at that. And I think it really alleviates when we can get these guidelines down and really be universal across the high school. I really think that it can alleviate a lot of the family stress. I think we've gotten a lot of feedback about families and, and students looking at Skyward and Schoology. No, mom, dad, it's turned in. Well, it says over here, it's not turned in. So we're doing a lot of work right now and we're we made a lot of work done today, but we still have a lot to do, but we're, we're getting there. Thank you.
Well, thank you. There's, yeah, there's a lot to unpack and all that, but we have fifteen minutes, remember? Right? MS, the, the school improvement progress monitoring plan. You know, you, you know, depends on the, the timing, depends on the availability of data. So related to credits, you know, you're probably familiar with the fact that we have midterms and nine, nine-week grades and semester grades. So we'll be looking at that data in those moments. We have a site leadership team that meets monthly. So we'll align our work to, to look at that data together. The same thing with the other goals around office discipline referrals, try to making sure that we're being equitable with our practices and helping students stay in the classroom and stay in the learning environment. Regardless of your student group, like your high school, student at Northfield High School, we want to make sure that we are meeting where you are. And the family communication, Rico spoke to some of the things that we're doing there. Parents as partners, you've heard that a couple of times now. That specifically is a really organic opportunity for families to participate in dialogue. Like the first meeting is September twenty-fifth from six to seven fifteen. And right now we're looking at about three topics and we'll probably do some opening grounding together and then have three rotations of fifteen minutes. One of those will be probably Schoology, Skyward. Right? Because that's, that's a topic that has come up in our survey data. We want to get better at that. Another one will be family engagement. And we did, we revamped our plan this year and have a whole lot of, a lot of options. And while I think attendance was a disappointment from my perspective in terms of numbers, the people that were there had a great time and they were totally plugged in. We also, for families who couldn't make it because of lots of factors, right? One is my senior's good. I've been there three times. I'm not in, right? I'm not interested, which is, and that's okay. But what we did do is have staff do a, a, a video of every class and their syllabi and linked it and sent the reader update last week. So if you couldn't make it, you can still get that information from the teacher. So just looking for ways to help our families be connected is what we're after. Thank you and questions?
Thank you very much. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you all for the presentation. It's exciting to hear about all of the new ideas that you're bringing to the high school and the cultural changes that are coming with them. And I am so on board with this. This is, I'm very excited by it. But my question is, I know we have a very experienced teaching staff at the high school, which is great in many ways, but there some have been there thirty years or more. And how are they responding to these ideas? Is it easy to get the faculty on board and get them making these changes with their students?
Well, I once heard a comment that I tend to agree with, so that's why I'm going to repeat it. Right? Culture eats strategy, right? So you build a culture that makes sense to people and it's hard to argue against it. I mean, it brings the right energy to the table. People want to get behind something that's worth being behind. And our staff are right in the middle of it. It's not, it's not, you know, it's just sort of a trust and inspire culture, the participatory leadership. They're, they're in it as much as I am or as much as we are. We have, we have leadership team meetings monthly with two different teams. Our PLCs, we met the summers and action team and they developed the plan for PLCs. Which basically supports a differentiated plan for their learning. Right? Which is what we want them to do in their classroom. So if we aren't modeling that as leaders, can't really expect our teachers to differentiate their instruction if we aren't differentiating their learning. Because as we know, like I mentioned earlier, school improvement goals, I've been doing this for a long time and I promise you, no growth happens if teachers don't change. Like their practice has to get better. They have to meet students where they are differently. Or, or we don't see growth. So that, that's what we're after is building the capacity in the people, the adults that are leading kids to be their very best. And it's not in a way that is saying you're not good at what you do. They're very good at what they do. But our data does matter. And if we're going to, if we're going to grow, we have to use information that we have and our data provides that. And we didn't get into a lot of the data tonight because fifteen minutes doesn't really allow that. But I think we're confident that we're in this together.
Thank you. Very nice. Any other comments or questions, Jenny?
Thank you to all three of you for the presentation. I could, could one of you or maybe all three of you talk a little bit about attendance this past year and how it possibly correlates to academics and performance.
Well, it sounds like Becca.
I want this one. I'm really excited about it. I was on the attendance work team over the summer. We met multiple times, extended our planning time. We must've spent twelve hours talking about this because it's a problem. And it's not just a problem here at Northfield High School. It's a problem across the country, but we are like ambitiously setting up plans and strategies to help make a difference. So we are, I'm really excited about part of the proactive. And if you would like to add to the proactive measures we're taking, I would love to hear your ideas. So we're going to start doing some reinforcement of positive behaviors essentially by doing some drawings on the weekly across grade levels to hopefully inspire our students to spread their sphere of influence and convince their classmates to make sure they're showing up, to help families recognize how valuable and important we think it is to be in the classroom. Even if you're getting good grades, that was one of the quotes that I think I said thirty-five times this week, right? And the drawings will include a variety of different experiences that you can't buy oftentimes, right? Like riding a Zamboni. Or spending a game in a box office with your friends, eating pizza. Or having Bubba Sullivan take you underneath the high school and touring those tunnels, like things that maybe are that high school experience you can remember. Of course, there's some baked goods and other items too, because everyone's got their own cup of tea, but we want to be proactive for sure. But we're also being very clear with our students about some of the reactive measures that we'll be taking if attendance becomes a concern for them. And we can share with you kind of the flow chart of what that looks like, but. We're going to be really early on strategically, meeting up with students and their families if the student is not coming into school. Um, for unexcused reasons or if we're not receiving communication, we just know the negative impacts that that has at the individual level on students' mental health. On their learning, obviously, which is we're in the business of learning um and so forth. So taking some super strategic actions and making sure our teachers. Are set up for success with some systems to make that more manageable. Um, just because. We were playing a numbers game last year and it made it challenging. Um, and then. You heard me say this is a a sentence or a quote that I've used thirty five times this week and that's because we're sharing this in our class meetings. It's in our information out to families in our bulletin each week. Um, this is a huge point of emphasis for us. We know it matters. We have a lot of kids doing great things there, but it is something that we need to see changed to.
And and they go back to the the slides, Raiders lead. And focus on wellness, right? And to focus on creating experiences for kids worth coming to. Engage in like the classrooms, like, right? Um, which is all part of the PLC work. And helping students to find agency in this high school experience. It's not mine. As I talked about kids today when I was. I took a couple of the class meetings and right, it's not, this is not my experience. It's it's students. And so. Hearing their voice and getting their getting student input into what makes this experience unique. And I think part of that. Well, I think I'm going to engage our parents as partners probably into November or the next meeting after September is really around envisioning a high school we desire. Like change, things are changing, like high school of yesterday isn't going to work for the high schools tomorrow. So what what are what are ways we can stay true to who we are? Because there are some things that don't change and aren't going to change about in-person learning. In a comprehensive high school, but there are some things that probably need to change just in terms of some flexibility around. Hybrid classes and different offerings that we that we might have. And so I'm interested in some community input on that. Uh, I think that will also be something we look to when we think about attendance. It's not as simple as be here. Like, well, that's important. We don't want, we don't make, we want to get worth coming to.
Just real quick, you know, fifteen minutes is probably gone. Um. Yeah, yeah. I'm huge. If you don't know me, I'm a huge um people person, relationship person. And I I I many years ago, I came across um a term that's not really used in Lakeville. Uh coined the term, probably didn't coin the term, but school connectedness. And that's just the same thing as. Our student engagement surveys that we gave out last year, you know, was a teacher that you connect with, what what brings you here? Um, what gets you out of bed? And I always wanted, I'm always thinking about that. I'm always thinking about what. What can these certain groups of students connect to at the high school? Me, of course, I want that to be me, but I also wanted to be the boxing club that we implemented a few years ago, which. Really helped our Hispanic population feel connected to school um and certain things of that nature. So. That's what goes through my mind, but these class, these class meetings. Ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade and twelfth grade are so very important with attendance. Um, we also changed some some um attendance calling in prop procedures from twenty four hours to forty eight hours this year. So that we can really look at those unexcused absences and verify them with parents, which are going to be game changers when you're talking about. The nexus to grades, attendance with grades and the chronic absenteeism too at twenty six percent, we're going to. Be a lot better at too going forward. So it's just a little snapshot of, thanks for the question.
Thank you. I have a another couple of questions. Um, I'm lucky enough to now have a high schooler of my own. Um, and so I've I've heard a little bit about flex and how awesome it is. But I was kind of wondering how, so in your school improvement plan, you you mentioned um. Some of the resources that are offered during flex um for academics. Um, can you just talk a little bit about how you inform students of what's available? Because. I mean, as a as a parent, you know, it's that information isn't um was isn't really available. And so I'm just kind of curious to know how the students are notified of what's all out there, what's available. Um, because I know, and I know even if they do know, they sometimes don't want to take advantage of it. But you know, how how are you also encouraging them to to try it?
I'll speak first to it, then I'm gonna let the flex scheduler talk. Uh, part of this is about building the capacity for them to understand the framework, right? Flex is flex is not a gift. Right? Flex is a is a transactional space and time in the day, right? Right? It's about wellness. It's about academic wellness. It's about personal wellness, but interpersonal. And so they have all kinds of opportunities to plug into what they need. And the expectation that academics play a role in that flex time. Either either because they're leading self and they're determined that they need that and they know that and they use that flex time to sit at the high tops and do work. Right? Or they go and they look at the schedule, which is printed and posted and available to students on school and elsewhere. And they they can go to the teacher that's on that day in that particular content area. Uh, there's a test center where they can make up a test if they were gone. There's all, there's so lots of opportunities to to do like the self, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show up because I need help. I'm gonna find my friend and we're gonna sit together and eat and our lunch and work together or all the way from. You need to be here at this point in time because teacher A has directed you to. Then there's a uh flex response team that if we have to, we coach them. They really meant that that you needed to be there. So tomorrow, like make sure you show up. And so so there's some of that, like it's just a continuum of. Of uh leadership expectation, right? Leadership of self would mean that you can manage that on your own. Every student can do that all the time. But that expectation is there so that as they get older and they can move through the experiences that they can share the culture, like I can tell you right now, every junior, senior. Can tell you and tell every freshman, and they do, what the importance of flex. And what what your role as a student coming into this high school and how to make it work, because they don't want to lose it. So I'll I'll let Ms. Bang speak to the specific.
So I have the pleasure of writing the schedule. If you like puzzles, you can join me because it's like forty hour project or so. Um, but the the reason is because it's so important and so valuable to make sure that we're making the most. Out of the resources we have. I feel like it's stewardship coming to life, really. Um, there's strategy around how we communicate out in our CCR lessons. So the very first week of school, students don't really have flex. They have a CCR lesson every day and then they have their lunch period and the purpose is so we can intentionally take the time to teach them one day. About what are the expectations for lunch? Like, where do you go? How do you get lunch? Where can you eat? Because. There's a lot more freedom in high school about the where, even in what, how do you manage that space? There's a second day that's devoted to the activity portion. So do you want to go do ceramics? Do you want to go lift weights? Do you want to go do band lessons? And what are all the activity kinds of things that are available to you? And how do you access those and see that schedule? And then there's an entire day committed to the academics. So. One of the things that I've been really intentional about with reading, creating that schedule is that we have. Content area teachers in every content area avail available every single day. And that there's some intentional consistency with where to find them. So for example. In our media center, the first half of flex every single day, and I think I might flip flop which one it is. So forgive me if I'm wrong, but there's. A math teacher who's a math interventionist, who's in the media center every single day for half a flex. One of our solid um language arts or English teachers is in there the other half. So if you need help in either one of those content areas, it's easy to find them. They're in a space that's a good working space. We also have an area called our M wing vestibule. There's some like comfy chairs, there's a couple bathrooms and there's like a desk. And that space, even though it's just a random space in the school, is also a dedicated math space. So. Every single teacher who happens to have supervision there is a math teacher so that. If you're looking for your teacher A that's close to their classroom, because sometimes even if we communicate and try to over communicate, kids forget. But that it's close by so that you can find someone who can help you. Um, and then the last thing that we do is like we try to communicate that schedule, right? It's accessible in students' school group under resources. They're taught how to find it. Um explicitly, and then like Shane said, there's little post-it notes that are pre-made for our teachers to say, here's the one. I expect you to come in. We really want to make sure that we're working together to help you be successful in this class. So. A lot of intentional efforts there. We're hoping that we see um outstanding results and so far our students have not disappointed.
Thank you. And then my last question is about, um, you mentioned possible revisions to school and Skyward. Is that something that is, are those changes something that would roll out this year yet? Or are you going to wait until you receive feedback? Maybe from parents as partners and then make the changes for next year?
Really great. It's like I planted that question. It's a really good one. Yeah, so we've been, we've been, we have the data, like we have multiple years of teacher or parents saying communication could be better. Right? So I'm new, so I started asking the questions. Well, what are we going to do about this, right? And so our teachers are very much on board. We've had lots of conversations and. I've been working with some teacher leaders, again, that participatory leadership model kicking in here, not a Shane thing, it's a staff thing. We value the partnership piece and we know that we got to figure this out. Part of the challenge is these systems don't work well together. That, right? And the the pandemic sort of put all the, it's like it made stew out of these two things, right? In the middle of pandemic, let's just survive. Coming out of the pandemic, we have to really reevaluate and reestablish what these purposes of these programs are. School is a look inside my classroom, due dates for things, resources that I'm going to share so you can at home, you can pull it up and do it, right? Maybe send an assessment or whatever it is. That's, there's no grading, there's no great reporting in school. There's not going to be going forward. Right? The grade, I want to look at my grade, it's in Skyward. That's that's the intention of that system. The problem is school does grading, but not everybody uses school for grading. So you see, if you see, we so we had to shut the grading feature off for teachers for parents to see. Because that's not accurate and that creates all kinds of miscommunication at home. That's one thing. And we're also doing cleaning up some codes and uh there was, there was that we were eliminating the automatic after seven days. You're going to get a uh automatic message that something's missing. So I turned, I'm a student, I turn it in on day five. Teacher hasn't graded it for a couple of days. On day seven, you're getting a missing message. I come home, you say, well, Shane, where's your, okay, you got a missing assignment. What am I going to say? I turned it in. Uh, no, you didn't. It says right here. Well, yes, so that conversation has been happening for eons. In this case, it's been happening for a long time and it's unfortunate that it's been happening for a long time. It needs to get resolved and I think there's a couple of things we're going to do to fix that and we're we're going to create a parent facing document. To help you, I did, I introduced that a little bit in the radar update this week. With a little eyeglasses that said, here's school and the purpose and here's Skyward and the purpose. And now we'll put some more context and some meat to that. So it's much clearer. Now, will it be perfect? I'm pretty certain it won't be, but it'll be better. And then on the September twenty fifth, that'll be a good formative assessment. A group will come in, that'll be one of our sessions is like, how's it going? What are you seeing? What's what's working? What's not? And then we'll just keep trying to refine it and get better. But thank you for that beautiful question.
Thank you for the great answer.
Good. Anyone else questions or comments?
Sure. Well, thank you for thoughtful and excellent presentation tonight. I'm excited to see where the school goes under your leadership this year. And thank you for the explanation around Skyward. I know that's been a bone of contention in my household once in a while, so appreciate that. Um, just a question on goal one and credit attainment. So. We weren't digging too much into the numbers, but what does that look like in in numeric terms? What was it last year? What what will it be for this year?
I I think if you go back to the, if if we can pull back up, slides back up, we can take a look. Looks like Tim is queuing us in here. So if we go back to. Um, the, let's go back to the slide that had the graphic. In the right direction. This one right here. So this shows you the where the credits were on the left hand side. For me, it's that that's all students. So eighty percent of eighty eight percent of our students this year were on track for credits and then twelve percent were not. So so if I just break that down then on the right side, just from one year to the next. So. Uh, we we grew from fall of twenty twenty two to fall of twenty twenty three from eighty eight percent of our non. Pre-reduced line students to ninety three percent on track for graduation, which means that they have the number of credits they would, they could typically earn. At least six in, they could do, it could earn seven, but they need minimum of six. So if you have five and a half or less, then you're behind in credits. So that's how we kind of track that. And they, so they they improved significantly. And then our our group that's uh in the FRP category. Also increased, but it is the from seventy three to seventy five percent. Uh, but but we want that to obviously improve. So our focus will be to improve core instruction. And and have our students lean into the systems of MTSS. So you know, the tier one is all students get something, right? That's from the teacher core instruction. If students show up needing more, flex time is a place to get some of that. We also have a a success center where students can go for a structured tutoring time. Um, and and we also have some courses that are offered that are that support students who are who have been chronically behind. In reading our our math. So there's there's different support systems that help kids along that journey. So we're hopeful that we're going to continuously see that number increase for on track. Does that make sense?
I think so. Does it? So is the goal then um ninety three and seventy five or?
Oh, like the number that's improving, increasing to?
Yes.
Uh, I'm trying to think, what do we establish that at? Oh, yeah, it's a, so this this goal came, thank you for that. Okay, I'm with you. So the goal came out of our uh achievement integration. Goal, which is our district wide goal. And so we took that same language and this, so it's a, so as you look at it, it's a like a three year goal. So by twenty twenty five, we want to reduce that to thirteen percent. So that's, we're on a continuum from twenty five right now, we want to get to thirteen or or better by twenty twenty five.
Yeah, that's, I saw that in the.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Um, I had a question for, did you Jeff?
Only NHS grad in here other than over there. Been a while, but uh, yeah, it's kind of funny when I I listen to you guys and and uh and I say that with respect because obviously. You know, walking through the halls and anytime you ever saw a principal or something, you're wondering if you're doing something wrong or doing something right. But. I mean, I I really see over the years that, you know, how. Things and dynamics have changed so much where you're kind of really in a position where you kind of got to be the. The cheerleader and the disciplinarian and the educator all at the same time. It's a whole new ballgame, really. And I just want to encourage you. As you're doing to stick together and and, you know. Have that call out there for excellence and here's what we're about. Here's what it means to be a raider. Here's the benchmark. I mean, if you're having problems. We'll work with you, but here's what we expect and we want to get you to graduation and we. We've been very good at that over the years for having a very high graduation rate. So thanks for the good job.
And thank you. Um, my question has to do with goal three, the family communication um part. Uh, you list here progress um monitoring attendance at family engagement days. What are those days? Like, how many, what do you count as a family engagement day? And what I, what I'm thinking here. In terms of counting attendance, as you mentioned, there's video links to the classrooms. Um, and some systems, Google's good about this, can give you some analytics on people clicking on that. So would you count? A parent watching that video as attendance? I would, but I wanted to hear from you.
Yeah, I I think it was what you talked about earlier, like my my initial reaction was disappointment, not seeing people walk in the door. But but I I all I have to do is quickly pause and think about myself as a parent. I just had a graduate. And I didn't attend conferences for the last two or three years, A, because I knew the math. Right? And the math and traditional conferences is that you're lucky to stand in line for ninety eight percent of the time and get to a person. That that model just wasn't functioning well. I conference ID is a wonderful concept if you can get inside the door and sit down. But with twelve hundred kids, it's really complex, right? So yes, right? Any metric we can get, and I think. From virtual or anything in between, uh you know, our radar update is one of our, one of our metrics, like, you know, that that gets from two thousand. Views at the high end to twelve hundred on the low end every week. Right? That tells me parents are are at least reading it or at least opening it, right? And I'm trying to be way more. I think twenty first century savvy, like more pictures and less words, right? Because people get buried pretty quickly in words when they are. You know, on their way to the football game because they're going to look at their phone on the way there, right? So just understanding that we have to be really careful about how much we're. Content we're pushing at people and trying to make it visual and smaller chunks, I think is part of where society is at the moment. So we got to kind of lean into that.
And are you have a goal in mind from last year to this year or kind of what do you have for this attendance at engagement?
I I, yeah, I think I I don't, at this point, I think it's something we have to do yet is is established, like. Like here, here are the metrics we're going to look at. Some of these have, are going to be baseline. Data, like the the positive tracker system, for example. Last, last year's system was built with good intentions, but mathematically not possible. And it just became like a fire hose. For teachers in terms of like communication they're supposed to do. So in many cases, it didn't happen at the level it needed to. And also, we didn't have a way to monitor it. We just never found a good system to do that. This year with this uh spreadsheet we've created where basically. We have a list, list of by grade level and teachers will put their name and the date that they made a contact in there so we can actually see. How many students actually got four positive contacts or more. Right? And the parents as partners will be another metric that we didn't have last year. Uh, so and I think the electronic version of the of the family engagement days wasn't something we had last year. So I think it's. So I think it's really going to be more of a baseline year to determine, okay, here's where we are, now where are we going to go from here?
And I, and I think you can see that you have a great community at the high school when you have events like the barbecue for the seniors and you see all of the parents coming through with that and, um, just attendance at the different, um, sports and plays and whatnot, so. I think that, yeah, we have a great community there, there's, you don't have the numbers like say in elementary conference day. Um, I, I really liked that, what you said about the engagement, that parents have the, um, or their role, in other words, um, that they're not absent, but their role is different. Um, and so are you able to come up with an example or an idea of what good parent participation looks like at the high school, say for an eleventh grader?
Well, I, I think your example of this, of the senior cookout. Like, I, I found, I have, I have found over the years, Northfield and elsewhere, at, at the secondary level, if you establish what you need and you say a time and a place and what you, and where to be, people typically will show up. It's what's, what they don't have time for is this sort of broad, hey, we'd love to have you involved. Parents, you know, high school parents are like, what is that supposed to mean?
Right.
Right? So I think that's what we could do more of. And then, and then, uh, measure those opportunities like, like, like those, like the, uh, parent engagement night. Uh, the parents' partners thing, that, that's going to be thirty-five parents hopefully. Uh, with topics that are helpful to them and then they're going to leave giving me, us input on what's next. What's the next thing you want to hear about or learn about or give us feedback about?
That's fantastic. Thanks so much, parent, oh, did you want to?
I add one thing, because I feel like you talked a little bit about like, what does it mean to be an engaged parent? And I think a lot of it, we can't see. Right? A lot of it is the conversations you're having with your student at home. It's the you checking schoology with them and Skyward with them and saying, hey, it looks like maybe this class is when you want to go reach out to your teacher and encouraging them to start taking those action steps. Obviously, if they're still not doing it and things aren't going well, we want to hear from you, we want to partner with you. Um, but one of the ways I think sometimes we're collecting that data is honestly, it's when, when we're showing up at activities and asking you like, hey, how are those conversations going? Do you feel like you have the information you need? And so sharing with us when we are at those events, like what is going well? Um, or what we need to do differently is super, super helpful. Um, and some of that, I just, I'm, I love and I hate surveys, right? Because I love hard data and I know all of us have filled out like seventeen too many surveys in our lives. And so sometimes I know you don't get around to it and I get it. And so telling us your story sometimes is a really helpful way for us to get the picture of what it feels like to be the parent that's supporting the students that are in front of us.
And lastly, just going to plug Raiders lead one more time. Right? The four, the four habits we talk to with kids today about leader of self. So if you look through that lens as a parent, be proactive, like take initiative. Make the phone call, make the email, stop in if you have, if there's something you're wondering about. Right? Begin with the end in mind, what are we really after? You want your child to graduate likely and probably have a challenging, amazing experience. So lean into those conversations with your kid and with our, with our staff, because they're ready to have those conversations with you. Right? And, and uh, what's another one? Be proactive, begin with the end in mind. Um, putting first things first. What are the priorities? Right? At home, articulate those. And then, and then model that you value, we value education first. Right? So kids are getting to school, they're putting that ahead of going and playing ball on this day because they're behind, right? Those are the kind of things that at home you can do to help support us. And I will share this, uh, our class presentation with families so they can have the same language at home and I'll probably put a little note with that saying the prompt that Mr. Uh, Warren talked about, like, hey, have a conversation with your child about the class presentation and the things that are in it.
What's it sharp in the sound?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, anybody else comment or question? Okay, well, thank you so much for all the effort you put into the presentation and being here after a long Monday, I'm sure.
Great, thank you.
Good night and have a great year if we don't see you before. All right, we are on to item C, the district safety drill update, and Superintendent Hillman will present on that.
It's just, and just a introductory comment, that was our last of our school improvement plan, uh, presentations. And I think that you have seen over the time that you've, uh, those last few meetings, the passion, uh, and the great leadership that we have in our schools. We are pushing our strategic plan forward, you saw that as part of every single presentation. Tonight, you heard specifically how the strategic plan, what that means for our leaders at each of those individual levels, so. And of course, anytime someone says that if you're sick of me talking about the strategic plan, we're halfway done, well done, that's great, because we are. Um, so my role here is to talk a little bit about, uh, our annual required safety drills. And while we have talked about safety at this board table before, um, there was some prompts to why we're doing it and the way that we're doing it tonight, I'll get to that as I, as I briefly discuss this. So the first thing we want people to know is, we say it all the time and we mean it every time from the bottom of our heart, that our district does prioritize student and staff safety, it is something that every single leader, the leaders in this room, every morning when they wake up, su- uh, student and staff safety is one of the first things that we think about every single day. Many people ask me, well, what are you doing, you know, about, uh, safety and, and, uh, just after the horrible tragedy and you've all the, I, I wrote to families about the litany of things that we do uh, to every day to keep our students and our staff and our community safe. And I, in, in the document, I provided you a link, uh, to that writing at that time, at that moment, it was very raw for me um, in the wake of that tragedy, so those words speak better than me writing them again today. But I do want to tell you that it is, um, it sounds so simple and yet I know it to be true because of my twenty-nine years of experience. Prevention is the most important thing that we can do for school safety. And prevention and school safety is solely developed, what our principals have talked about, student relationships. Student relationships with their teachers, with their family, with a neighbor. It's one of the reasons we have a couple of benchmarks about connectedness to the community or connection with another adult. Um, kids will tell us, if one of their friends is having a problem, kids will tell us. They will tell us in a variety of different ways. It might not be them coming up to a principal and saying, I'm struggling, I'm having some difficult thoughts, I need some help. That, that isn't usually the way that it comes out, it comes out in other ways that really are developmentally the way that students are. And so we teach our staff and we try to work with our parents to listen. And if you see something, say something. Talk to our principals, talk to a staff member, talk to your friend, talk to your neighbor, talk to someone at your church. That network of loving children, and I use that word very intentionally, loving our children is what is going to keep us safe. You can put up all the guards and all the gates that you want, there is nothing that will stop someone if we don't have those relationships with people. So I, I opened the discussion with that, that we need to love children, we need to make sure that they know that they're loved and they, they have a connection with people so that when something is wrong, they tell us. And when they tell us something is wrong, we spring into action. And it doesn't matter if it's six-thirty in the morning or eleven o'clock at night, sometimes even overnight. And so we have a, a system of working with our community, with our local police department. Uh, if we get a tip, we have a system for be able to do a threat assessment and to investigate. And those things work. Um, we would rather do them a hundred times a year, uh, than do them one less time than what we should have. So for the people watching, uh, the board meeting tonight on video, again, tip four-one-one is something that, uh, the city of Northfield uses that is monitored twenty-four hours a day. Any adult, uh, in the school, if you say something, they will bring it to the people who can help. So prevention starts with listening, it starts with loving our children and it is about making sure that we have those relationships where kids feel comfortable telling us what they need to tell us. So as we move into the required safety drills, we do these required safety drills because they're in state statute and we follow state law, but they're also good practices of our systems. So what I want to share tonight is just, uh, the four different types of drills that we do and then I'll talk about the one um, that is legislative required for the board to discuss at a regularly scheduled meeting. So we practice evacuation drills, the most common evacuation drill that we practice, required five times by the state, are our fire drills. Um, I'm guessing we might have had some schools that have already conducted them intentionally or unintentionally. And then tomorrow, there'll be some of those that are going to be going on as well. We try to practice those as often as we can early in the year so that kids get those routines. Now, there can be other circumstances where we would need to evacuate the building, but the fire drill is the most regular practice that we do. Um, I'm going to skip to the fourth one, which is the shelter in place. Shelter in place is typically used to satisfy the state mandate of an annual tornado drill. This is where students go into the designated safety areas within the building uh, that would keep them the safest as possible, most of the time in the event of this really inclement weather or a dangerous storm. But shelter in place could be used for some other circumstances as well, when there might be an, uh, an initial issue that needs to pass by before we can let students get out of the building. But again, more often than not, um, shelter in place is really around, um, severe weather. When we talk about lockdown drills, these are the things that really cause concern. Because I think when people hear the word lockdown, they immediately assume the worst. And understandably so, because of the things that we have seen, uh, happen in our country. The more often of the two lockdown drills that we use is a stay put. And that just basically means stay where you're at because we've got something we want to deal with. And almost always now, that is a medical circumstance. And it could be that we have had an injury that we need to be able to get a medical personnel into the school and we just want them to be able to get in and out. It also protects our students from having to see maybe a, uh, one of their, uh, teachers or another school staff member in a position that might cause especially young children concern. In some cases, it is to provide a student who is having some real emotional difficulty, the dignity to be able to get back to a classroom where they can collect themselves and, and be able to go on with their day. So the stay put is really mostly used for those kind of circumstances. And again, that is simply coming over the loudspeaker and saying, you know, we've gone into a stay put medical lockdown and um, we don't typically give a lot of the reasons for that, but that is the drill. The duck and cover drill is, uh, the drill that is used when we have an intruder in the building. And that is intended to practice, excuse me, it's intended to practice for if we were to have an intruder in the building. Now, obviously, I think as soon as we, uh, have the word intruder, people's minds immediately go to armed intruder. And yes, that is one of the reasons that we are practicing the duck and cover drill is to practice what are the skills that we need to do, what are the things that we need to take, the steps we need to take if we did have an armed intruder in the building. But an armed intruder is just one part of it, there are other types of intruders in the building that also, uh, could be of concern, that aren't armed, that we could also use that same kind of, uh, strategy to address. So the duck and cover drill now does meet the state, the new state definition of what is called an active shooter drill. For a long time, I think most people thought when they heard the word active shooter drill, they go to the place where they think about law enforcement, EMT, other people simulating what an actual, uh, emergency situation would be like. Northfield has not ever done that kind of simulation when students have been in school during the day. We have been a site to coordinate regional law enforcement and emergency management to conduct a simulation, but we've always done that on a Saturday and we've used volunteers to participate as actors to role-play that situation. The new change in state legislation means that our duck and cover, which is simply pa- uh, practicing strategies, if we have an intruder in the building, armed or otherwise, we did not initially think it was going to be considered that active shooter drill, but it's very clear when you read the law, it is. And so state statute now says that, um, the board, if we are going to conduct, if, remind, remind you, we are required by state law also to conduct five lockdown drills per year. Now, they don't dictate which of those are duck and cover or which of those stay put, but we do feel the need to practice both of those. And so any district that does, uh, something that would be considered an active shooter drill under the state statute are required at a public board meeting to talk about these two questions. The potential effect of active shooter drills on the safety of students and staff and the question, uh, effective, or the effect of active shooter drills on the mental health and wellness of students and staff. Now, I am not going to pretend to speak for every single parent, student or staff member in the community, but you know that I am visible and engaged in our school buildings and seeing these kinds of things happen and how our staff react um, and how our students react. And I think that really it's a tale of two cities on both of these, because you cannot put all students, staff and parents into one bucket, it does not work that way. So the effect of active shooter drills on the safety of students and staff, as an administrator who thinks about this every day, what I want to be able to know is if we have to go into that unimaginable circumstance, that people know what to do. Now, we don't have to overdo it, right? We don't have to get to the point where we're, uh, creating greater trauma, um, which is a possibility, there's, there's things that people have been through that even conducting these drills can bring out both in the physical safety part and in the mental health component of it. But I, I think if we all know what to be true, is that we want to have some kind of practice so that we know that our systems work. So when we do a, a duck and cover drill, we actually use the systems, we checked in the lockdown button, do everything it was supposed to do, did it. Do all of the electronic and digital things that it was scheduled to in the building. Each of our buildings are different, each are laid out different, even each of them have different, uh, layers of technology, if you will. Our custodians and our buildings and grounds department, our principals are checking, did all of those, uh, automatic systems work? I can tell you that the lockdown buttons call nine-one effectively because, um, on more than one occasion, uh, we have had someone who has accidentally pulled the button, thinking they were a substitute secretary and they accidentally pulled the button that they thought was going to let someone in the door. And when you see police officers showing up in less than ninety seconds, you know that that button works. And all of our phones go off like Christmas trees, there's a, a blue light that goes off above Anita's desk. And I'll tell you, when that blue light goes off, it's a very serious piece for us, we are checking, we are automatically calling, we have a system to make sure uh, that everyone who has a need, uh, has those needs met. So from the physical, from the safety perspective, I think it stands to reason that it's something we never want to use, but if we don't practice it, we won't know are all the systems working properly. So that in, in my superintendent's lens, that is, uh, the practical effect of the safety component of the shooter, of these duck and cover drills for our students and staff. And what I have learned over the last several years is more about how differing circumstances and experiences affect people's mental health in wildly different ways. Anyone who says, I know how mental health has affected our kids, do not know what they're talking about. I can tell you this for sure, because as many human beings as we serve, that's as many different effects on mental health that we have. Are there some generalities and some things that we can point to? Of course. And so for some people, the practice of an active shooter drill, or as we call it, a duck and cover, can cause mental anguish because they are forced to think about this circumstance. We have to be honest, we have to name that. And at the same time, I also know that we have students and staff whose mental health is supported by those drills because they have a plan then, right? They know, if I hear this happening, this is what I'm going to do. I'm not saying either are right or wrong, what I'm just saying is that we have to meet people where they're at and do the best that we can. So part of the new law is that after we conduct a drill that would be considered an active shooter drill, or to what we call a debrief, we are still looking at how that works, that will most likely be, uh, principals, um, or assistant principals coming over the public address announcement system to be able to talk about it, to recognize and to recommend to students that we do have, uh, counseling staff that are available to help them. And so this is a really important part for us to consider those two questions. And I do think it stands to reason that, um, no different than on every airline flight that you get on, you know, they talk about what are the safety things that you would do in these very unlikely circumstances. That is akin to this, of course, differing levels of, of urgency, uh, but still both would be important to be practicing and to thinking about. And then again, that mental health component, there's as many different ways of processing that as there are human beings in our buildings. And so again, I think the two biggest buckets of that would be people who that reassures them. It reassures parents that, oh, they've been practicing, they know what they're doing. And for others who, the mere act of having to talk about it, um, can be problematic. Both things can be true at the same time and both things are. So I just, I wanted to go through those four different lockdown, or excuse me, those four different, um, required drills that we have. Um, we did share a couple of other items in this, just what are some other things that we use to, uh, execute the drills? I did talk a little bit already about the lockdown buttons. And I do want to take this opportunity to remind the community about a very simple but incredibly effective safety mechanism that we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on a few years ago to make happen. And I can tell you, we, uh, have evidence from other instances that this is a major deal. And all of our classroom doors, uh, can be locked from the inside without a key. So I just want you to imagine if you are in a terrible situation and you have a group of students that you are trying to protect and you had to look for your key and you had to try to get into the hallway and then get the key into the lock. Just, just think about that, for me, on a good day, that's hard, right? Now imagine that you understand that there's a danger in the building. So the ability to do the locking of those classroom doors with, I call it a thumb lock, there's a couple of different strategies that we have in the district. That is real safety. It is real safety because without thinking about it, people can lock it and they can get to where they need to go. And I share that so that the people here, board members and people watching this video, understand that those are the types of practical things that we're doing, uh, to keep students safe. Um, we provide evacuation, relocation and shelter in place maps in, uh, each building. Um, again, we do coordinated across the system drill, so later this month, I'll be doing a coordinated drill across. Again, we do coordinated across the system drill. So later this month, I'll be doing a coordinated drill across the district. And then we are continuing to work on, and we think with about the next month, we're going to be prepared to launch. Crisis Go, which I know everyone's excited about another communication system. But this system has the ability to push out live attendance pieces to staff so that if we had to. Evacuate and reconvene and have that. Be able to do that reunification site that we would be able to in real time, know which students are with their teachers. We don't have to wait for paper and things like that. So it's been a little bit of a longer runway to get this launched, but we know that we'll get it launched in the next month here. So. Again, we're, we were required to have the discussion about those two questions that I brought. That's in statute. But we took, thought we would take the opportunity to discuss something publicly here that nobody wants to think about. Right? But we have to think about it in order to make sure that we're in the best position to keep kids safe. And I come back to with what I started at the beginning. That kids need to know that we love them and they need to know that they can talk to us because that's when we can help them. So with that, I would be happy to entertain or facilitate a discussion about those two questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, Noel.
Dr. Hillman, two questions regarding. Duck and cover. One is, how do you deal with visitors?
Great question. So you can, in a drill, it's fairly easy. We tell them where to go, right? But in, in the case of a real emergency, we have people who are checking and to making sure that we're getting people inside the closest door that they are able to do so. So that is what we are, that part is in the moment, Noel. So if. We have people in the office and there's a visitor in the cafeteria, they're going to get those folks into the nearest closed and locked room as quickly as possible.
Whose responsibility is that?
Yeah, I think we all take your responsibility for that, but our staff know that that's why we do the drill. So that our staff are the ones who are responsible for that.
I'll pass on the second question.
Great. Anyone else comment or question? Amy?
So I have a couple of related questions. First, how often do we do the duck and cover drills and does it vary between the different schools? And with that, are the students informed ahead of time that their drill is going to happen? So is it, do they know so they're not surprised?
So I asked some of our administrators to say so they can give me that breakdown of the duck and cover versus the. Stay put. So they'll give me some numbers here and remind me how many roughly, what's the split? So three duck and cover and two, that's the same at the secondary roughly, okay? Sometimes you have an unanticipated drill. So for example, when you actually do have a stay put circumstance. You actually do count that, right? That does count as your drill. So. We did have one building last week that had a medical situation that they needed to go into stay put for. And so that counts as their first, even though it was a real circumstance, it does count as the drill. The second part is part of the new legislation. We had often told people ahead of time. That these drills will be coming as part of some standard communication in the fall of the year. But the new legislation requires that we notify families at least twenty-four hours in advance. And that we require, or we are now required to allow people to opt out of the duck and cover drill. We've done a lot of thinking about how could we, how do we do that when you're trying to practice the lockdown in the entire building? You can't say, well, we'll send you to the media center while everybody else is, because we need to practice the lockdown in the media center as well. So unfortunately. The best option that we have right now is a family would like to opt out of that drill. They'll need to come and pick their student up. You know, for the timeframe of that drill. I wish there was a different way that we could find that, but when we're practicing that, really, we need to practice the whole building. So those are the notification pieces and we have worked, we've put together a document. Of how we're able to comply with this new law and including some sample scripts that people can use for that.
Thank you. Anyone else question or comment? Question or comment? Ben? And then we'll call Noel.
Matt, I appreciate your comments just on prevention, the importance of relationships. I think we've heard from the leadership this evening. All of the good things that are happening in the district with regards to that. So and I appreciate explaining in great detail the different types of drills that we have and how that will. Beat the new state requirements. I just hope that my grand, my children did not get the chance to not to have to go through this. I know growing up, this was something that I didn't have to deal with and this was tornado drill, fire drill, that was all we had. I just hope that the society, we get to a point that maybe my grandchildren will be back to just good old fashioned tornado drills. Thank you.
Totally agree. And I think I now I'm going to say that when people, when I, we talk about relationships and people's eyes start to go, oh, they're going to go talk about relationships again. Then we're a quarter of the way there on that one.
Okay, Noel.
My second question was regarding what's called side lights. The doors to an entry will have a glass panel alongside it.
That's right.
What's the strength of that glass panel? You may not know that, but that's a good question.
It's a great question.
Secondly, if you break the glass panel, can you reach in and release the door? Or is the door locked on the opposite side so you couldn't be reached?
So that's a great question, Noel. And we have seven different school buildings. Some of them have side lights as you described, some do not. The strength of the glass is typically, it is your regular, good old fashioned glass. We have identified some locations where we have used a film. It's a, I believe it's a. I'm not going to say the name of the company because I don't want to get it wrong, but there's a film that you're able to put on glass where you think. Would be the most likely for the situation that you describe. And in that case, what happens is the glass does not shatter. This film catches the, the glass. I'm not going to, for obvious purpose, I'm not going to say out loud where those places are, but I'd be happy to talk about it with you afterwards. And then I think the other piece that we need to understand too is that. We're fortunate here in Minnesota to have what I think is the preeminent center of research on school violence. It's called the Violence Project. It's a partner, it's two professors, one from Hamlin University, one from Metro State University. Who have studied every instance of gun-related school violence going back forty years, in fact, all mass casualty events. And so we learned a lot from those kinds of things. And while the situation that you described is plausible. It is not probable at this point for a variety of different reasons. So the duck and cover drill, just simply the locked door. What we know is incredibly effective at preventing someone from getting into a classroom. And so the simple act, even with a side light, locking the door, getting students and staff away from a line of sight. Because remember, in that case, if all those things, we are going to have law enforcement support quickly. So we don't need to buy ten minutes, we need to buy three minutes. And so I think the key part there is that while that is a, an area obviously that everyone should think about. We believe the systems we have in place allow us to have that important side light because on every day, that's an important thing, right? To be able to see into a classroom. And so we're always balancing that part of how do we maintain security? While also ensuring that we are a warm and welcoming building that functions as a school. So I do think that what you bring forward is a good concern. I also think that a number of other systems are in place. That alleviate that concern to the best of our ability as of today.
Thank you for your insight.
Anyone else comment or question?
I want to thank, I asked the administrators after a very long day just to stay through this presentation if people had specific questions about building related items. So. Thank you. And you can all go home and get some rest now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Dr. Hillman, for organizing that and presenting. Okay, next we have item D. We have the activity sponsor partner agreement. And Director Finance, Val Mertesor, will present on that.
Thank you. So I'm going to just make one small technical correction. The locks were not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Was it over a hundred thousand dollars?
No, it was between ten or twenty thousand.
Okay, thank you for correcting that.
Just wanted that to be publicly available, correct information. So I am very excited.
I was wrong.
Share, it's okay. The team effort. I'm excited to share our first sponsorship agreement governed by policy eight oh nine point one. So this is a policy that the board approved maybe a year or two ago now. But we have not had any agreements under it. And so we are in fairly desperate need of a new middle school pool scoreboard. It is over twenty years old and my understanding is that pretty much if it breaks, there's no fixing it. So this is something that they have been talking about for a little while and rallying around. And they were ready to do a full court press late this spring and. We pumped the brakes and I said, wait, there's a policy now that we have to, you know, go through. And so we've been working through the summer with them to figure out what that should look like. And so I'm excited to share that Community Resource Bank has agreed to fund the full purchase price of the entire scoreboard. Twenty thousand dollars. They will have exclusive advertising. The top of it is going to have their logo for ten years. And then at the ten year mark, it would be then available for us to, to go out and rebid. In a process for some additional operating revenue. This is kind of the theme we're looking at with this particular board policy, but this is our very first one. The next ones, we're also going to be setting up a process with LMR. That's a contract that you approved. I think at the last meeting. And so this will be an item for information at the next school board meeting. And should you choose to approve it, we would begin the procurement pretty much the next day. The current lead time is about twelve to twenty-four weeks on the scoreboard. So we want to make sure we get that. In time for at least a little bit of the season if we can, would be ideal, but. Yeah, we're kind of using this as our test case to see what kind of. Language we wanted in an agreement and what made sense for the district. And so this is our first one, but. Again, grateful for the partnership with Community Resource Bank and excited for this opportunity. So. I would welcome any questions you have.
Super. Thanks, Val. And this is, will be an item for action at the next board meeting. Any questions from the board members? Amy?
It's great to see us moving in this direction. I'm just wondering how much a new scoreboard costs?
Twenty thousand dollars.
So it covers the cost exactly. Okay.
Yep.
And how long will it last?
The current one we've had for twenty years. So. I mean, depending on. If you consider new technology to not last as long as old technology, you know, I would hope fifteen or twenty years again with this scoreboard, but. It's effectively the same exact model size and layout as our current one, just with the updated technology. So. They were trying to make sure it was cost effective. It was something we're going to ask for help with.
So at the end of ten years, are we going to ask them for another twenty thousand dollars, but keep the old scoreboard for additional ten years and?
So. One of the things that I'll be working through with this is making sure that we have a process set up that allows for. Any business in the community to be able to have these opportunities. There's lots of opportunities throughout the district. And so we want to make sure we have. That we're not, you know, going to the same businesses over and over and over again. Just to make sure everybody has the same, same access and opportunity to do the advertising. So I'm envisioning some kind of, you know, process where they're. You know, offering a bid on it or something like that, where we can go through that process. But. That is what I'm working on. This was just a pretty immediate need and a good test case. That was a pretty straightforward one to, to move forward on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else question or comment?
I think we just want to thank President Jim Lowe and Community Resource Bank for stepping forward to do this. I think. It's a big ask and I think it's great when we have community partners who come forward to help us fund these kinds of things. So.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, next is item six, the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Move by Jenny, second, by Amy. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seven is our items for individual action and we have two tonight. Firstly, have the superintendent's focus areas for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I'll take a motion first. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's focus areas as presented for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? Move by Cory, second, by Ben, thank you. Are there any questions or comments about that item? Want to make any other comments? No? Okay, so we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? And motion carries. Item B was added in the table file. It is. It is the co-curricular ad. And looking for a motion to approve the addition of an assistant boys cross-country coach for the twenty-three, twenty-four season. At an anticipated cost of four thousand three hundred six dollars, prorated to the number of days worked. Move by Jeff, second. And by Amy. Are there any, would you like to make any comments?
I just want to make a couple. So once we set the number of coaches each year, it takes this board to be able to add to the coaching ranks. And so. The co-create, the reason that we're asking you to vote on it in one meeting as opposed to the typical two meetings. Is that the co-curricular committee met on Friday of last week to review the latest numbers. As you saw in the packet, we have increased from thirty-seven boys cross-country runners in twenty twenty to sixty-two in twenty twenty-three. We're really excited to see that program go. Two coaches, really a third would be very helpful. And the reason we brought it to you tonight is because we really want them to have this coach for the remainder of the season. The top would have been four thousand three hundred and six dollars. It'll be less than that because it will be, again, prorated for the number of days that this individual had worked. So. We thank you for your consideration. Where, as John Mahal reported at the last board meeting. We have seen an increase in participation across all fall activities so far. So really a good place to be.
Okay, questions or comments at this point, Noel? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have items for information. We have the right to read screening on Wednesday, September twentieth, six P M. At the Northfield Public Library. They will be hosting a screening of the documentary Right to Read. This is a film about teaching children. Use, a film about teaching children using the science of reading and it relates to equity and education. A discussion with Superintendent Hillman will follow after the film. Our other item for information is the Northfield International Day of Peace that is happening. At Central Park, September twenty-first from five to seven, there'll be a short program. And this is a program that is being worked down by several community organizations, including Cannon Valley Friends and Carlton College. Annually, this is a day that is celebrated by the United Nations International Day of Peace is celebrated annually on the twenty-first.
And I think someone told me you are the emcee for that event.
So there's a little vested interest in inviting you to join us on Thursday. Okay, then item nine is our future meetings. They are on Mondays, six P M. In this boardroom. Monday, the twenty-fifth of September, October ninth and October twenty-third. That is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, move by Noel, is there a second? Come by Cory. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? We, motion carries, we are adjourned.